Whoops. Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 6 meeting of the Belcher Town Board of Selectment, Select Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I will open up this meeting for public comment. Do we have any people signed up to speak? John?
Chriswell?
Yes.
Dorothy Chriswell?
Dorothy Chriswell, would you come up?
Sure.
We now have a presenter table, so please feel free to get comfortable.
So have a seat.
Have a seat.
You can stand.
Oh, maybe.
I'll go back.
All right.
Okay. Hi, I'm back with the very much revised resolution from the one that we borrowed from Boston and Amherst. And this is, has been looked at by a number of people in Belcher Town who want to offer this to the Select Board to take a fresh look and hope that you'd be willing to have a conversation that we can make it onto the agenda to at least see if it's common enough around that the Select Board could support it. So I did send them to you by email, but I also wanted just to get it on the record of what the revised resolution is now. So it's called Resolution Requesting Adherence to the United States Constitution. Resolution. Whereas the United States Constitution is the supreme law of the land, providing the foundational framework for the governance of our nation, protecting the rights and liberties of all citizens, and ensuring the separation of powers among the branches of government. Whereas the continued success and stability of the United States depends on the faithful observance and enforcement of the Constitution by all public officials, institutions, and citizens. And whereas adherence to constitutional principles is essential for upholding the rule of law, safeguarding individual freedoms, and maintaining the integrity of our democratic system. Therefore be it resolved. One, that all government officials, agencies, and institutions at every level of government are hereby respectfully urged and reminded to strictly observe, uphold, and enforce the United States Constitution in the exercise of their duties and responsibilities. Two, that any actions, policies, or legislation inconsistent with the text and intent of the United States Constitution should be reviewed, reconsidered, and if necessary amended or repealed to ensure compliance with constitutional standards. Three, that citizens are encouraged to remain vigilant, informed, and engaged in civic life to help preserve and protect the constitutional rights and freedoms guaranteed to all Americans. And four, that copies of this resolution be distributed to relevant governmental bodies and officials as a formal request and reminder of the oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. So, that's it. We tried to just really trim it and get to the basis that I think most of us have grown up with and live with. So, thank you, I really thank you for all of your time that you put into these meetings and for having a public comment moment. And I just realized, you all don't know me at all, I just wanted to say hi, I'm Dorothy Chriswell. I live by the lake, by the town beach. I taught kindergarten for thirty years in Leverett. My kids and grandchildren are all in these, they're not in Belcher Town, but they're, my daughter teaches at Amherst High School, and my grandchildren went, anyway, they, so, we've been here, I've been here since ninety, been on the lake since nineteen ninety-seven. So, I really love Belcher Town, and I know you do too, and I thank you. Hope we can continue the conversation. Does anybody else need a copy? I did email it too, so, okay?
Thank you very much, Dorothy. Okay, and does anyone that is meeting us virtually want to speak? Okay, hearing none, then I'm closing the public comment period. Are there any documents to sign?
Um, not right now.
Okay. There are no additions to the agenda, so we can go directly to appointments. John, can you put that over there?
Thank you. On the agenda tonight, we have three appointments. We have Cliff McCarthy coming in to talk about a governor's plan. We have the Brandon Committee, and we have the Kestrel Land Trust, in that order. I'm gonna ask the board if you don't mind taking these out of order for a second. The Kestrel Land Trust information came in late this afternoon, and I know none of you have had a chance to review it. So we can either take up that conversation as they go in order, or we can ask the Kestrel Trust, who are in attendance tonight, virtually, if they can wait until our meeting of the twentieth to take this matter up to give you more time to review that document. So, I guess that's the question for the Kestrel Trust, if you can open up your computers. Thank you.
Hi, Kristin.
Yes, hi, Kristin DeBoer, I'm the executive director of Kestrel Land Trust. Elizabeth Roblica from the trustees.
Hi. We have not had a chance.
Since the conservation restriction in its entirety today, after getting the final review, but on Thursday, we did send a summary, which is sort of the meat of the matter. I think the, you know, certainly we can come back on the twentieth if necessary, but the gist here is to have this certified, that the conservation restriction is in the public interest between two private lands. So it's not requiring any funding or any town participation, other than agreeing that what, that the land is valuable for the public benefit as a forest.
I'm just not comfortable until I read the document in its entirety. I don't know if other people feel that as well.
I feel the same way. I'd rather have time to actually read it and review it and have thoughtful input.
Yeah.
Questions, I don't know what kind of questions I would have at this point. I don't wanna miss something.
Yeah. I, I really think we need to do due diligence and would respectfully request that we meet again on the twentieth, so we have a chance to review everything and, and work with you at that, at that meeting.
Can I just request that they give us like a brief high-level summary of what is happening? I mean, I know what's happening, 'cause I read it, but...
Yeah, you did?
Well, I mean, I didn't read this, I read the summary.
Yeah, I read the summary as well.
And I mean, I know what's going on.
I think that would be appropriate. Can you do that? But, but, or would you rather just come back on the twentieth and, and do the whole thing? It's up to you.
We're happy to do the introduction today. I think that you'll find that the document itself is quite long, and the summary is the most relevant part, but yes, we can give you an overview now. So, I, I think you have the map in that summary document. So just that there has been sale of land from W. E. Coles to Limequab and LOC, and that land is now transferring to the trustees for permanent conservation with Kestrel Land Trust holding a conservation restriction. And the intent of that permanent conservation project is to keep the forest as a forest and guarantee public access for hiking, hunting, and fishing. And it really follows the standard format of all the conservation restrictions that we hold over town conservation land. So in many ways, it would be very similar to the benefits of the Hollandland Conservation Area or many of the other additions that we've made over the years with the town. I know Doug Albertson's on this call, but Kestrel has been a partner with the Town Conservation Commission for twenty years and has protected at least a thousand acres in this area of the north Quabon, or the north Belcher Town between the Quabon and Mount Hollye Range. But it's really keeping with that larger vision of maintaining forested land for wildlife and public benefit.
Can I ask questions?
Yeah.
So, this sketch map that is here, the parking areas, are they currently parking areas? Or is that like something that you are proposing, you'll put in for folks to enjoy the property?
Those are proposed.
Okay, so they're not, and so would...
No. Let me just look. So there are, there are current, there's a current parking area at the, yeah, so the one on Route Nine that's, is located on the town's conservation land is existing. And that would be improved with private funding that we've raised. The one on Gulf Road would be new, and the one on South Gulf Road would also be new. And then the one that's on Skir River Conservation Area is existing, and that would be improved. So two existing, to be improved, and two proposed as new. And that isn't, that would be following its own permitting process, and it's not subject to the conservation restriction decision tonight, really, or on the twentieth.
So would the, would the new parking spots interrupt wildlife or negatively affect what you're trying to do?
No. Elizabeth, can I speak to them? Oh, can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
All right, so until Elizabeth's audio gets working, you know, the parking is on existing roads, so it would not be an intrusion on the forest.
That's great.
And if I could follow up with that, I'm pretty familiar with this land, and most of those areas are being proposed where there's log landings from previous timber harvesting projects. So I don't think they're gonna have a big environmental impact to add some parking there, especially small scale.
Okay. Can I ask another question? Can someone, Doug, or maybe from Kestrel, just explain to the board what a conservation restriction is and why it's important?
Yes, Elizabeth Roblica is, is the expert in the common and restrictions. So if her audio is working, I would refer to her. Elizabeth? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so quick follow-up, this beginning with the parking area off of Gulf Road, which is our proposed site, it would be, of course, subject to all permitting, as Kristin said. So you know, so the town will get a very thorough look at it. But it would propose to be a rather primitive parking site, not improved much, and rather small. You know, we haven't actually designed it yet, but I think, you know, we're thinking four, five spaces. So, that, that's, that's that. And I also wanted to say, when you look at the conservation restriction, the first pages are really what set out the importance of this document in terms of the public benefit, the protection of water supply, the protection of water quality, of the forest's habitat, the connectivity, and in particular, how it beats three goals of Belcher Open Space Plan, how it beats, how it falls into the federal county wildlife designation, and how it furthers the state goal of protecting ten percent of our forests. So, th, th, those are the fun pages to read. The rest of it is really just legal, legalese.
Okay.
So was the question, how does the C.R. work? Is that what I heard? Yeah.
Yes. And the importance.
So the trustees is the landowner, we are a land trust. We don't always have conservation restrictions over us, 'cause we never really intend to build on the property. But just in case we did, Kestrel would be there to prevent us from developing the property with any sort of structures. So I will note, this C.R. does allow for some primitive recreational structures in furtherance of camping or through, through trail hiking experience on the England scenic trail. So other, so it prevents development, it prevents us from carving up the property and selling it off to multiple landowners. It allows us to do our, our typical restoration work. We tend to work on our properties to improve the habitat, we maintain the trails. That's about it.
You do a great job.
I'll just add that because Kestrel has a longstanding partnership with the town of Belcher Town, and we hold all the conservation restrictions over town land when Community Preservation Act funding has been used to match state grants, this, this would be an extension of that role that Kestrel plays in partnership with the town and now with the trustees.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Do we still need to read the document and have them come back?
Yeah, so we're gonna read the document.
Okay.
And have you come back on the twentieth. We really do appreciate your time. And certainly, I'll speak for myself, saying I really love your work and have enjoyed the trails myself, so, but thank you for giving us an opportunity to both read the document and, and also hear your introduction. It was very well done, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, very good, thank you. See you in a couple weeks.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to flip, or?
Yeah, I can go back into order.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. So, we have Cliff McCarthy on the Governor's Plan to Bring Nuclear Power Back to Massachusetts.
Or you just flip the chair?
Okay.
You hear me all right?
Yes.
Well, thank you for letting me have a few moments of your time to alert you to the Governor's Plan to Bring Nuclear Power Back to Massachusetts, something that I find really alarming, and it's happening largely under the radar. My name is Cliff McCarthy, I'm part of the Commonwealth Coalition for Democracy and Safe Energy. And some of you know that I'm a history guy, so I want to begin by reviewing some history. In the late nineteen seventies, Massachusetts was a national leader in the fight against nuclear power and waste. Bay staters were front and center in the fight against nuclear, against the Seabrook Power Plant to shut down Yankee Row, the Pilgrim Nuke, and we forced the scrapping of plans for a nuclear plant in our own backyard in the Montague Plains in Franklin County. In nineteen eighty-two, we presented a statewide citizens petition to the voters that would require any further development of nuclear power or waste facilities to be approved by the Massachusetts voters in a statewide referendum. Our ballot question passed by a two-to-one margin, and after some legislative piling on, resulted in the Nuclear Power and Waste Disposal Voter Approval and Legislative Certification Act of nineteen eighty-two. Now, this law does not prohibit the development of nuclear power, but it rather protects our democracy by making sure that such critical decisions rest with the people, rather than a wayward politician or the nuclear industry. It guarantees that these decisions are preceded by a transparent exchange of information and a fair discussion of the facts. Now, buried in Section forty-five of the Governor's Energy Affordability Bill, H. forty-one forty-four, is a quiet attempt to have this law repealed. Why? Well, the proposed legislation itself doesn't mention nuclear power. The Governor's Letter of Transmittal attached to that bill makes her intentions very clear. It states, "This act would repeal a nineteen eighty-two law that mandates that any new nuclear facility receive approval through a statewide ballot initiative, eliminating a major barrier to the consideration of new, small modular reactors that could improve reliability, stabilize prices, and decarbonize a region's power grid." Small modular reactors, they're called SMRs. The fact that the Governor is seeking the law's repeal is both a slap in the face to the citizens of our state and an indication of how little she values the democratic process. If her embrace of nuclear power is so good for the Commonwealth, why must this be done in a quiet provision in a massive piece of legislation? Why can't she sell her plan to the public in an honest and above-boarded discussion the way the current law intends? The Governor has been seduced by the industry's siren song of small modular reactors, which should instead set off alarms clanging in our ears. SMRs are, in fact, a repackaging of the same dangerous and dirty nuclear technology in a way that makes them cheaper to build at the site. The idea is to spread these smaller generators around the Commonwealth in many locations. This is a terrifying thought. These facilities are no less dangerous, they still use highly radioactive material that will be deadly forever, and they will be dispersed throughout the Commonwealth in communities like ours. They will be subject to natural disasters, terrorist attacks, mechanical failures, and they will be located in populated areas. So why is this a local issue? Why should this come before you? Why should you be concerned? Well, these SMRs will still generate high-level nuclear waste, which will likely be stored on-site. Host communities will have to deal with this radioactive waste essentially forever. How many municipalities around here are ready for this responsibility? A Massachusetts Public Health Study and several related investigations have identified higher incidences of cancer and Down Syndrome among residents living near nuclear power facilities. Can Belcher Town adequately protect the public's health? Is our own Board of Health up to the task? And how about our neighboring towns? While a full discussion of the merits and perils of nuclear power, and particularly the small modular reactors, would take up more time than I have today in this meeting, it should happen. Let's have that discussion all around the Commonwealth. Meanwhile, let the Governor put her cards on the table. The Governor's Energy Affordability Bill, H. forty-one forty-four, is currently before the Joint Committee on Telecommunications, Utilities, and Energy, and it's being fast-tracked for action this fall. It's a good bill, it's got a lot of good stuff in it, it's designed to keep the cost of energy low. And it would, it's, this section is tucked into the bill in a place that seems innocuous, and as people are likely to miss it and not really care about it. I urge you to call our state legislators and ask them to remove this section from the bill. That's all that has to happen. The rest of the bill is fine, let it go the way it is. And, but take out this section, and if we're gonna move towards discussing nuclear power, let's do it above words and in the open. And I think there's a lot to be concerned about, but we'll leave that for another time. The important thing is, get this section out of the bill, so we can proceed with the kind of discussion that should happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment. So, I know nothing about nuclear power or the effects of nuclear power, but what sat with me in this, and I'm with you on this, Cliff, is her reversal of a referendum, of statewide referendum. I have a huge problem with that. So, my feeling is, I think as a board, we should write a letter to our legislatures on behalf of the board, having this removed, this section of HB forty-one forty-four.
We were quite frankly surprised when we learned that there is no protection for a citizens' petition, a citizens' referendum, beyond the, what would be there for any other law. The legislature can just repeal it or override it or amend it.
Okay, well, that's, see, that's the one thing I, in, after listening to you a few days ago, I looked at the language, and it does not override the existing federal nuclear regulatory framework or change safeguards related to radiation safety or waste beyond what is already allowed under federal and state rules.
What are you, what are you talking about, Section forty-five?
Yes.
Section forty-five just says repeal the, the bill, the, the one that was, the Nuclear Power and Waste Disposal Voter Approval and Legislative Certification Act.
I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't override the existing framework, at least from what I could tell. I'm not saying that it, I, I'm agreeing that this, this is something that we should do, but I also wanna be careful not to overstate what, what it, what the bill's actually saying. Now, prove me wrong if I'm wrong, but I, I looked for this and could not see anywhere where it's saying that it's, that, that the current existing federal regulatory framework is off the table. And the other thing is, it does not guarantee funding or explicitly select sites or projects for nuclear facilities. Now, do we still need to, you know, to say, even if you were to consider it, we're already saying no? Sure, but it doesn't explicitly say, okay, here's the money, and this is where we're gonna do this.
No, the, the bill that, that is, the Energy Affordability Bill that this section is buried in doesn't talk about nuclear power at all. It only, she only mentions it in the, the letter of introduction.
Right.
But that's not the only thing that's out there. She has an energy bill, or the administration has an energy bill where it talks about SMRs. She's been on the speaking.
I do agree with you there.
She's been talking about it. And that I mentioned, on Saturday, there is a joint committee that is supposed to be looking at SMRs to see whether they should be included in our nuclear future. And that committee is fifteen members, thirteen of which are from the nuclear industry or from the government.
Exactly, yeah.
But as far as the, the language of the bill of forty-five, the language, the Section forty-five is really only one sentence, and it says repeal that bill. Now, that bill that is, there may be other protections that we have out there that are not in that, that particular bill. But the, the section that we're concerned about here is simply to repeal the Nuclear Power Waste Disposal Voter Approval and Legislative Act, which was passed in nineteen eighty-two after the citizens' referendum. There may be other, I'm sure there are other regulatory protections that exist.
But I understand what you're saying. I just was alarmed myself when, when I heard what you were talking about, and, so just in doing my own humble research.
As you all should and could, that's, that's good.
So, the D.O.A. Hampshire Gazette says, "Section forty-five of H. forty-one forty-four would remove the requirement for a statewide public vote on any new nuclear power plants." The nineteen eighty-two law requires any proposed new nuclear facility to be approved by statewide ballot initiative. So I do think what you're saying, that's my part of this that I have an issue with, is the removal of the referendum itself.
That's exactly right.
I don't disagree, I just wanna be careful that we're not, we're not...
Upsetting our legislature?
Well, no, that, that somehow we're making it more than it is. I understand what, what you're saying. Do we wanna make a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Have you talked to our state legislatures yourself, like?
Many times.
Is there other communities doing things like this?
Yeah, well, the coalition is active all over the state. And as you see, the call to action that I brought here is from a CAFE organization. I just lifted their material. There is a webinar on the back of that sheet, if you wanna go to the webinar and get more information, you can see that. There's lots of information that's out there. There, when I spoke, I've spoken many times with our state legislators. Jake Olivera is totally on board with this. He thinks the removal of that section is important. Aaron, not so much, I'm still working on him, but we'll, we'll get there. So, but it would be really important for him to hear your concerns. And...
Is there a citizen petition started at all across the Commonwealth?
Not yet, but if they remove, I guess I don't want to tip my hand too far.
That's fine.
But I can be guaranteed that if they remove this section of the bill, we'll be right out there next week getting signatures for getting it back on the next election. So, it would be the beginning of a bigger battle.
Well, let me frame it this way, is there a deadline to have this done?
Yeah, it's being fast-tracked, as far as I understand it. Now, I'm not inside in the legislation, and it's way more complicated, but the committee is moving forward on this. They've held their hearings, they have ninety days to report the bill out, and that would make it sometime in November, I believe, and then it would probably have to go to Ways and Means for another round. But the governor wants to move this bill quickly, because it's energy affordability, and she wants it to be a factor in this winter. So, she's pushing to have this moved very quickly.
Well, I'm just thinking, based on what John's questions are, I had the opportunity to actually do some research on this, and I don't know if you would feel, you know, good about having that same opportunity before we make, we have a vote on it.
No, I mean, if the citizens already voted, I'm backing the citizens, it should be, I mean, if the citizens already spoke, we should be backing them at this point. Even if it's 1982, I guess we'd have to start another citizen petition to overturn it, would be my thought process. The governor or should overturn what the citizens want. That's my personal view.
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't personally feel very well-versed on the topic. I think probably lots changed since 1982. I'd probably like a little more information before I personally voted on something.
I feel the same. I don't, I don't know.
I'm not a scientist.
It sounds like our state rep, or senator, Jake Olivera is already tackling this, or on board?
The whole Western Mass delegation in the state senate, as I understand it, is pretty, pretty set on getting rid of this section. However, there, the senate, the way it works is the House will pass it, and it'll be in that bill unless they get pressured to take it out, and then it'll go to a conference committee, and in conference committee, it's, what happens between the senate and the House is undetermined, we don't know what'll happen. But because the senate takes it out, doesn't kill it, it just means that it'll be an item for discussion when the two houses meet on it. And right now, the indication is that most of the houses is in favor, or is not against section forty-five. I don't know how much attention they've given it. Like I said, much of this is being done under the radar, and it's, you know, it's something that I feel necessary to bring it up, so people understand what's going on.
What, if we waited until the twentieth, what, how would that, positively or negatively, or what would that do?
The twentieth of this month, your next meeting, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
I don't know that it'll have any impact at all, it would be fine, if that's the barrier, don't, you know, there's no.
Are you asking?
I guess I just don't know. I don't know how quickly the legislature is gonna move on it. I would think probably in two weeks, they're not gonna, it's not gonna make that big a difference.
Make a decision, right. I just want to give people.
Are you asking us to do additional research on our own between now and the twentieth, or are we looking for an alternative opinion on this?
What would you like?
I personally am ready to support signing of a letter to our legislatures. But I would commit to doing additional research if you want to push this to the twentieth.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with it, I think it's fair.
When is our legislative visit? Is it next time?
We don't have one yet.
Okay.
I don't think we'll make it in time to be able to talk to them about it.
I was just curious, why they're divided, and you know, what their thoughts are.
Our legislators have a very busy schedule, and we've had trouble with getting them scheduled. We originally had them scheduled for tonight, and we moved away from it. They've indicated it's not likely in November either. So, I don't know if we're gonna see that this year.
Okay. Is it appropriate that we ask them to comment on this, and get both Jake and Aaron's insight?
If the board asks me to reach out to them, I can, I can email over to them and see what they have to say.
Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Would be helpful.
Is it appropriate to ask them at Quappen Days?
Let's not, let's let them do their thing.
I have one more question, maybe you can answer it, maybe you can't, you have to do more research too. If this does pass, whatever, I'm just saying it does, can they, I don't understand it, can they just say, "I'm gonna put a nuclear site in Belcher Town," or is that like?
First off, the technology.
I'm just kinda understanding it a little bit more.
The technology they're talking about, SMRs, is theoretical, basically, there are no SMRs that you could point to.
Like, the governor can say, "Belcher Town, you're getting this system no matter what, you have no choice."
Well, this is why I brought up the regulations, the framework that's already in place.
That's what I'm concerned about, I guess.
It is not my, from what I've been able to see, that framework still stays in place. What concerns me is that the voters are being taken out of the equation, framework or not, but we, you know, unless they come in and say, "Okay, we're doing away with, you know, the regulations around nuclear power."
No, I don't think that's a danger.
Yeah, I don't think that is, but I get it.
But you should be aware, Elisa, you should be aware, though, the trend everywhere is to make nuclear power easier and simpler to cite and locate, and they're taking away a lot of the protections that we've had in place. For example, for the large nuclear power plants. One of the reasons why they go with the small modular reactors is that it's small enough that they feel like they can get it in under the.
The radar, they can get away with it.
There are a few benchmarks, if you produce this many kilowatt-hours, you have to, or kilowatts the size of the plant, you have to do this. But if you do them at smaller plants, then you don't have to do those protections.
Got it.
But be aware that we're talking about things like evacuation plans, we don't have an evacuation plan, there isn't any for anything in Massachusetts right now that I'm aware of, except maybe the, where the two decommissioned plants are. We're talking about a waste disposal facility, we don't have a waste disposal facility anywhere in the country, never mind Massachusetts. We're talking about, you know, structures that were, are necessary for the protection of the public. When we had giant, the giant plants, the smaller reactors still have the same problems, and the restrictions on them are less, and so, it's really, it's quite alarming. And I, as far as, you know, she's gonna waver her magic wand and make them happen, no, they're probably ten years off. And one of the arguments that she uses for why we need to have nuclear power is that she's trying to decarbonize the grid, and that's all fine and good, but that's not, that's a false choice, either carbon or nukes. I mean, that's not the choice. There's a lot of investments that could be done along the way, including making the grid more flexible. There's a lot of things that could be done with the kind of investment that nuclear power is requiring that could help decarbonize our grid. But the fact that, you know, this, if she's trying to meet twenty, thirty criteria for decarbonizing our grid, these are not gonna be anywhere near ready to be online by 2030. I mean, even if she fast-tracks this bill, it's not gonna happen soon. So, you know, it's not, she, the arguments that she's making for it aren't really good ones, and I don't think that this is, this is the way we should go.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thanks for hearing me out.
What do we want to do? We'll come back on the twentieth? All right, do we need to vote on that? Okay. Cliff, if we need you to come back, can we read you?
I don't have my calendar with me, I can't be sure. But I can probably zoom in at least.
Okay. Thank you so much.
As I mentioned before, there's a little two webinar.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your work on this. Okay, so, at this point, it's, we have an update from the Branding Committee on the town seal. We'll get a better chair, we'll get a better chair.
Get one with a remote control, so I can raise it.
Not quite sure how that, how that chair got there, but anyway.
Good evening, CHI, Chair of the Branding Committee.
Sorry, there was no good time, there was no good time, I'm sorry.
Happy to be here. Cheers.
So sorry.
I am here tonight because the Branding Committee is kind of in an impasse with a resolution for the seal. We're charged with providing a logo for the town, and also digitizing the seal. We've had many discussions back and forths, you folks have seen some renditions of what the designer could do already, and we're not at a point where we're getting anywhere.
Okay.
So, as a committee, in our last meeting, we voted to, there's a proposal that we have from a designer that did a number of town seals, that requires either five thousand dollars, or up to five thousand dollars, to update the seal to a digital format. This is a company that's worked on seals before, and that kind of thing. That being said, we've gone back and forth between, do we put this out to a contest, you know, to have somebody in the town redo the seal? Do we, we try to do it in-house, we've had so far three members of the committee, you know, violently tried to get somewhere, and we're not there yet. Question we have for you is, what direction and what timeframe would you like us to follow so that we can make the resolution? I will say that the committee voted, you know, three, one-to-one, to appropriate or find these funds to professionally take care of this seal. The quote that Terry has is, she worked with the Town Clerks Association, and this particular proposal is through a company that has worked with town seals before, and so, she feels it's a very viable way to get where we need to be. Because right now, the challenge is, the seal we have is, under digital terms, is full-guarded, and so, we have to try to take that full-guard, put it into a digital format, a vector file, so that it can be this big, or this big, or this big.
Okay.
And to do that, well, okay, everybody's got their great idea of Photoshop, we all can say, "Yeah, I can do this." Except, the problem is, we need to have, we have one shot to do this, and we need to have it be right the first time. Unfortunately, you know, with the plan that we had with the grant funds that were appropriated, didn't work out. And so, I ask, we ask, you know, that, consider this, I understand it's not ideal, but at the same time, where's the means to the end? Or how do we figure this out? There are a couple of other options, you know, aside from, you know, appropriating the five thousand dollars, we can put it out to a contest in the town, but then, you know, again, how far do we get the can down the road? The other option is defer this to town meeting next year, look for CPC grant funds, try to, again, spend five thousand dollars, which may be seven thousand dollars down the road, the board knows, I don't know. But as a committee, I feel like we need to have this to be able to.
You need a resolution.
We need to.
You need to figure out one way or another, yeah.
And right now, we're sitting in circles, and spinning, and spinning, and spinning, and it's like, all right, so how long do we spend?
Yeah. I can hear it, it's almost painful.
I can follow up, I've been attending these meetings lately, just to find out where things were, and the conversation just keeps going back to, how do we move forward? You know, there's concern about how much time that it's gonna take, how much money it's going to take, what are the funding sources? We have people within the committee, Kate is one of them, who have volunteered to try to work through this on their own. The estimated amount of time that this is gonna take for somebody to digitalize that is about sixty hours at a minimum, and it's unattainable.
Wow.
You know, that's a very hard thing to try to absorb into anybody's schedule, especially for volunteers and people with limited hours. So, we have, through Terry, a quote for about five thousand dollars from a company that worked in Wayland, and they took a very folk-art-type seal and turned it into a very nice digital seal. And when we all saw that, it kind of made sense on how they did it. So, it was intriguing, but again, it's five thousand dollars, and up to now, we've used grant funding through ARPA and other grant sources for our wayfinding and branding efforts. So, this would be a diversion if we start trying to use local funds. I was able to find two thousand dollars over the last couple of weeks of searching. We had a line item set aside for copy paper, and we were able to have significant savings in a bulk purchase, so we have about two thousand dollars left over.
Which is about three thousand dollars short.
So, we're still three thousand dollars short. We do have some money for special projects, but I had that earmarked for cultural district We are going to go back to the CPC committee, Terry has an existing grant right now for the preservation of historical documents, and we're wondering if this could be included under that umbrella. It fits within the budget, so it may be possible that we can move forward faster, but if not, then I think our only option is to apply for CPC funds and wait until May for town meeting approval, and that means we would start in July, when the budget's available, and we would not be complete with the town seal until next year at this time.
Yeah, I mean, what I want to say is, you know, that, I want to take the stress, you know, that, like, this, I mean, this is wonderful what you're doing, and for it to become, you know, a really stressful piece of work, especially for volunteers.
We have one shot.
Yeah, and then there's that, no pressure, but we have one shot. You know, I tend to agree with our town manager that we give this more time, and.
So, that's, we're just kind of asking for direction from all of you.
Well, this is just my opinion, there's five of us, and, but I do think that, you know, I have been hearing some of what you've been going through, and this should be something that's kind of joyous, you know? And doesn't sound like there's any joy there.
We have had, we have had fun. I think it has been a fun committee, it really has.
No, I mean, I think this piece of it has been difficult, but what do the rest, what's everybody else's think?
Well, can I just ask everybody to get on their phone and Google the town seal for the town of Wayland, W-A-Y-L-A-N-D?
Can you put it on the screen, maybe?
I don't, I don't have it.
I don't have it.
Do you have it?
We had the communication. I don't, yeah, I don't.
We only ever had, like, paper copies of it, and I tried to find digital versions to say.
And I tried to find digital versions to save off, so we have them for reference. And we kind of successfully find the big four and after photos.
Is it this one?
It's the color one.
The color one?
Yeah. So the designer of that seal is the same one that Terry
John?
Yeah, I saw it.
Oh, you saw it.
That Terry got a proposal on. And although the branding committee didn't all agree that we should try to spend five thousand dollars to use this vendor, they did unanimously, the entire room agreed that this seal is just what everybody wants. I mean, that it was very professionally done. And kudos to Kate and to Chris Martin, I mean, you've got, what, twenty hours into this? I mean, and what you guys have generated has been really great, but it's just not getting us to where we need to be because of technological issues and setbacks that we have. So I think, what I, basically what I said to the committee was, because you all know that in the last meeting, I said, no, I want to have a resident do it. I've changed my tune on this. I said to the committee last week, if you all vote that you want to move forward with a professional vendor, I will support that. So I do support it.
Okay.
So I think I was the only one out of all of us that felt differently, so I'm back in agreement.
I ask a clarifying question, because when I see this, I think, wow, you just did a really great job, this is really fantastic. But, so the problem though, is that it's not the right kind of file, it needs to be in a vector file, and that's where the skillset ends.
Looking at?
Page fourteen in our packet. It looks like someone just superimposed over an embossed seal.
That page fourteen is one of the designs that Katie at locality did. But it did it past muster at the clerk's office. So that design is as far as it can go. We did have some conversation around that design in our last meeting about taking that design and finishing it, if you will. But it's, it's not so much that it's drawing on the computer, it's actually you're making art. And to come in and step in and finish another artist's work
Yeah.
Isn't always the best thing. Like, I looked at working with it, Chris was looking at working with it, and the way Katie did things isn't necessarily how we do them. So it's almost like more work to finish what she had started, if that makes sense.
But the elements of the seal would remain the same?
So the elements of the seal, we were told, have to match this version here, the hand painted one. Which is
Even, I'll just say that even this one is different.
Yeah, which is different than the one behind you, and is different than the one that's embossed stamped as well.
And this is part of the challenge, is trying to get to a finite place that's recreatable. And I feel like, you know, I feel like there's elements to all of this that are good. But it's just, it's not that shoe that fits right yet. And so we need to have a little bit of structure to do that.
Is that yours, Kate?
No, that one's Kate's. And, you know, some of the concerns too, also, that having the final professional eye on it is like, the text on here is very small because it's true to that life-size one that was painted. So as you take that, you start shrinking that down, if you put that in your letterhead, are you actually going to be able to read Belcher Town, Massachusetts on that?
So, yeah, the original seal is this first photo, which was a hand painted seal.
I just want to say, you all can see that I have art on my body. The bigger, the more detail you will have. When you shrink something like that, you lose all of the detail. My question, how big of a priority is the seal to finish out the work? Because the big part of the project was the logo. What, right?
We can't finish the branding guidelines without the seal. Because we can't finish putting together the letterhead options. And, you know, we've had two conversations already about business cards. We can't really finish the business card conversation until we know what the seal's going to look like because our digital version isn't of enough quality that you can print it on business cards, if you will.
But my, what I'm wondering is, we have limped along forever with the seal that we have right now. If we, if we slow this down, so you have time to see if there's funding available, bring it to town meeting, identify who might work on it, all of that. Could we do a short run of of the letterhead and business cards to get us through the year? Using the new logo though, and then, once we have it, have the seal the way we want it to look, then we add the seal.
You can't, one reason that you can't do that is that you have to have the seal on certain documents, including letterhead.
I'm agreeing.
Can't we use the
I'm saying, use the existing one.
Yeah, we've been using
But there's no existing one, there's existing, how many? Seventeen different seals? So this is more about getting consistency across all the departments that use different seals?
I agree, but it's a, it's
A short run at a print shop is going to cost twice as much.
Correct. You're wasting money. You're wasting money if you're just going to print business cards with the wrong seal, then come back, we can just take that money and just invest it.
And not to mention, it's the whole policing too, so you do a short run, and then you have the official one, then you have to go and make sure that nobody's still using the old stuff. Because people don't want to waste money, so I'm not going to throw up the letterhead and I'm
That's still going to happen, that's still going to happen.
I mean, I just want to say, thanks to the, I know Martin did a lot of work, he did a lot of work, Kate. And I think that's important, that we recognize the hours they spent on the seal as volunteers. That's huge step one, in my opinion.
Here, here.
Ed Knight was part of that too, and so that's a huge commitment the town has made.
You know, those efforts are very close.
Yeah.
We may see one of them rise to the top, and everybody says, ah, that's the one we want. And this may all be for naught, but we don't want to continue waiting without starting to make some decisions on how we want to use all of it.
I don't think we should waste, sorry, I don't think we should waste money on just this. I think it's five thousand dollars, it's chump change in our budget of fifty-five million dollars. If we can't find five thousand dollars in our budget. And, I mean, maybe this could account for capital improvement for technology, because it is technology. I don't know if we can put in the capital plan to find the other money, and we go for capital, because we have that set aside in our budget, and we can talk about it in budget season.
Yeah, we'd still have to wait till July one to start.
You felt the same way last time, and I was the one that came around. Now you're flipping.
No, 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 no. Look, I want, I want an official seal, I definitely want it. My, the, what I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute, is we have a fiscal crisis that we are dealing with right now with health insurance. And, you know, if, if, if there are pockets of money that just, woo-hoo, happen to be there, that's concerning. You know, we need to be a lean machine, hopefully we are. You know, Steve has found two thousand, that's great. If we can, if we can get a grant that can cover the rest, terrific. But I do think
But that's going to take time.
Yes.
And that's where, I guess, the question lies here, is do you, you know, with the rollout of the logo and the rollout of the seal, are you spending more money waiting? Or are you, you know?
Well, that is the question.
My other comment is too, second, it's not, in a grand scheme, it's not up to us, it's up to Terry, she's the keeper of the seal. The town clerk is the keeper of the seal, so it's
And she's here with
She's here, I mean, I would like to hear from her too, but in all honesty, that's, this is, she's elected to keep the seal, this is her job. And we have to support that job and voucher that out, and this is, part of this is by giving her what she needs to do her job. And I look at this, this is one of the things she needs to do her job. So I would
Has anyone disagreed with that yet?
I'm just saying
Stating the obvious, but I'm just, I'd like to hear from her too, but we keep kicking the can down the road, like we Well, Terry's, is Terry on?
I think so.
Yeah, she's here.
She should be able to stop sharing the screen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Terry, what's your opinion?
My opinion has always been from day one to do this right. This is our one time to do a seal that will hopefully be used in the town for another hundred years. There are a couple of options here. One is to write a new CPC grant, which I would be willing to do, to get the full funding. And in addition to that, I would also like to tack on to have our physical seal remade to match this new digital one. So that that will last us, again, another fifty, seventy-five years. That price is looking at around seven hundred dollars. So if we were to go for a CPC for, you know, fifty-seven, six thousand dollars, we could get the whole project done without so much struggle from our volunteers. While I do truly appreciate all the work that they've done and the efforts, this is just something I think that's out of our wheelhouse, it's certainly out of my wheelhouse. The other option would be, I already have a CPC grant currently working on archiving and restoration of our historical documents. I have not approached the committee, and I don't know if this is anything that's legally possible. But could the scope of that be so that the seal would be included in that grant that has already been given out, so that money is already available? That I don't, I don't have an answer to that question. That would, you know, it depends on what you guys want to do tonight, what direction you want to go in, but that's kind of my feeling on it.
The committee meets tomorrow, could they talk about it tomorrow, their meeting?
CPC.
CPC.
Oh, CPC.
What?
No, because they have to, it's not on the agenda.
Right.
They meet the first and third Tuesdays, so we'll be meeting again on the twenty-first.
No, CPC meets tomorrow.
First and third Tuesdays, which is tomorrow and the twenty-first, yep.
Okay. Also, what Terry was talking about, about going back to the CPC for new funds, that would be an issue potentially, because we can't get that on for next town meeting, so that would have to wait until next year's town meeting, right?
No, CPC closes, it hasn't, it's open right now, it closes the second Friday in November, so she still has time right now to do it.
But it has to be appropriated at town meeting.
Town meeting in May.
We're not going to get it by this town meeting at the end of the month, so it's going to have to wait until next year's town meeting.
Terry is proposing two paths forward. One would be a new CPC application for funds in FY twenty-seven, which would be July one of twenty-six. Or see if this will fall under the existing scope of work for an existing grant, which she could have a conversation with the chair, and if he agrees, add it to the agenda on the twentieth, so that they can take it out, if necessary. So those are the two paths. If the second path is viable, that money would be available right away. We also have an option of trying the fundraise. We had somebody volunteer to donate some money, I don't know if it was a serious comment or not, but people might be willing to put some money up. You know, we could also do a public outreach campaign, see if people are willing to donate some money towards this.
There's also a deadline coming up for cultural council grant?
This wouldn't qualify.
It would not qualify?
So I think our first option is, Terry goes to the CPC and asks if they can use the funds she already has to make this process go. Second option is she applies for CPC regardless, because that still needs to go. We could find money in the meantime, we can always get rid of the CPC and not vote in on town meeting. So in the meantime, we could still look for funding between now and the May town meeting. She should still apply for that regardless. Does it make sense to get the paperwork in and get the process started?
But the second one would have to wait till FY twenty-seven?
Yeah.
One July.
Which is Middle of next year.
One July of twenty twenty-six, right?
Right. So I think the purpose of tonight's meeting, you know, is Nate is trying to eliminate some of the stress from the process. Some of that stress is trying to meet a deadline that was imposed, you know, trying to get this done.
And I'm trying to move that away from that.
Yeah, we can continue to work on the funding sources.
Yeah.
What does the board expect, how soon do you want this done?
We've been limping along, and so to take the stress off, I'm suggesting that we extend the deadline to what would be appropriate.
I think we would need to report back on that, based on what's available for funding. Because if this will fit under the existing scope of work that Terry's working with, then we can give you a much better answer.
Can you give us an update in a month?
Yeah, why don't we do, why don't we, Terry, can you get back to your, to the group? And, you know, with your findings? And, you know, based on that, can, what, the next time the committee meets, can you talk about what an appropriate timeline would be? Either right away, or
Yeah, let me reach out to the chair of the CPC tomorrow.
That's great.
See if that's a viable answer or not, and I can let you know.
Oh, that's perfect, and
And we're going to need to get on Friday.
Your meeting on Friday?
Yes.
All right, so based on what Terry finds out, make a recommendation for us, and would be happy to support it, I think. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yeah, one thing I would recommend though, is if you can get two proposals, I think that would be ideal, just one other proposal from another vendor that does similar work.
Terry, Terry, was there a number of different choices that you had when you went to the clerk convention?
When I first asked the question, it was just kind of a basic, what town has done it most recently? And that was the Peter Vogel quote that I received. And so I can certainly go back out and get some more from some other towns.
Okay, I think we should do that as well.
Question for, I'm not really sure who, we are not making a color seal, is that correct? We have color on the logo, it's just black and white.
I'm really glad you said that, because I, when you had mentioned Wayland, I thought, that's expensive, you know, the color.
No, no color, just same designer.
Okay.
We're just trying to find something that's uniform, that's going to be fundamentally moving on, that's transferable.
Yeah. Is that's
Yeah, just, you know, since I've been speaking, I just received a text from a resident who wants to donate a hundred dollars.
Thank you, resident.
I think, you know, we still have the path of Chris Martin and Ed Knight, Kate, working on designs. Again, that could come to fruition. I don't have a problem putting an ad in the Sentinel and asking for donations, or putting something on the website, because people are willing to donate. This one was in honor of Margot Moran, one of the original painters of the seal. So it was, you know, an offer for, in memory of.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Money out there, maybe we can start closing that gap, and maybe we can make it work, so.
Well, let's also bring up from Terry, what we can do, but yes, and, you know, yes, if anyone feels compelled and wants to help Belcher Town seal to be the very best in one shot, we'd welcome your donation and support.
Well, we need to be careful too, I need to look at the fundraising guidelines and make sure we're not violating anything.
There has to be a thirty day, some sort of public window.
You'll look into that?
But I will look into it.
Okay.
And if it's possible, I'll get something out.
All right, excellent. Does this, does this help?
Yeah. So we're just going to wait for Terry's
We're waiting for Terry, and then you're going to meet with your committee and develop a recommendation based on what we all talked about here, and whatever other ways we can support you, please let us know.
I think the moral of the story is, I feel like this professional group, you know, be it five thousand, is
I agree.
It's just a matter of how we get to that five thousand.
Yeah, and that's where we are in agreement.
I think if you all are in agreement with that, you know, to have somebody that knows how to make shoes
We, do we all agree on that? Let's go the professional route.
One more question, so, since you said there are about seventeen seals, is this the seal that's going to be replicated?
No.
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 No, I had it up on the screen before.
Is it, is it this one?
It's the one with the two women standing next to it.
You don't have that.
It's not in there.
Okay.
Can't wait to see the seal. They see which one it is.
This one, so it's more like that one, but not the same.
The challenge there is, in today's
The challenge there is, is in today's digital empire, that's an artist that has a lot of artistic license.
Right.
Well, you, you try to take an artistic license and make it digital and repeatable, so that it's fun and every time, fashionable, expandable, well, that, that's really difficult to do.
Well, that also brings up Jen's point too, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You don't want to do all this, you know, just have something you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we did. Excellent. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, I'll toss this over to you.
Okay, under discussion action items, um, I would again ask the board, um, if you could take the matter out of order, um, if we could.
Yes, thank you for that reminder.
Been patiently waiting.
We're gonna move, um, F up to A, so we can, um, hear Ed's request for support of Quavon Day's resolution in twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, I appreciate it. A little bit of trivia too. We're talking about this chair, I was in the state house a few weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
The senators all sit in a circle. Every chair is a different height, so they're all at the same eye level. I thought it was an interesting piece of trivia there.
Wow.
Um, yeah, I'm here to talk about the resolution for Quavon Days. I think you're all familiar with Quavon Days. Uh, for the public out there that may not know about it, uh, we're doing it this weekend, the holiday weekend, and it's, the idea is to promote awareness of Quavon, which I don't think we have to do in this area, but essentially outside of this area. Uh, not only the beauty, but the importance of Quavon, mainly to Boston, as a drinking water supply. And take advantage of the fact that it's a holiday weekend to promote tourism. So it's also an economic development for, it's being done through the Friends of the Quavon. I'm on the board of the Friends of the Quavon. Um, and the idea is to serve as a catalyst for the twelve towns in the region. A lot of them already are doing things. And so what we're doing is creating a master calendar, just pulling all this together. It's the inaugural year, so we're doing it on a shoestring budget. We did get a grant though. The Mass Cultural Council for five thousand dollars helps support promotion. That's one of the other items on the agenda for tonight is to approve me putting out signs in town, um, just promoting, you know, lawn signs, that sort of thing. I do have a sign on the, uh, town common right now. Promoting on the con, on the sign board. And so I've asked the twelve towns to issue resolutions in support of it. Uh, earlier I was on Zoom with Pelham, they voted to do it. Uh, New Salem's doing it tonight. I think Ethel's doing it this week. So, you know, a lot of towns are doing it, which I appreciate greatly. And again, it's just to help promote the awareness of it amongst our citizens, among the public. Uh, there's been a lot in papers. We made the front page of the Ethel Daily News yesterday. Uh, do you got, does anybody got a copy of that? I haven't, okay. I wanted to see a hard copy of that, I just saw the electronic one.
They do an Ethel.
Hmm?
Ethel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably up there to get one.
Yeah, a little further away than normal.
They've got the market basket.
Well, I've been, I've been doing, I've been doing the tour of the Quavon quite a bit, all eighty-three miles of it, going around the Quavon on the road there, just promote this. So, uh, resolutions before you, uh, I'd like to ask that you do just, you know, pass it in support of Quavon Days.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and see where we go next year with it.
Thank you. Open it to the board.
So are we doing, we're doing the resolution, not the signs yet?
I can talk about the signs too, if you want.
Let's do one thing at a time. Uh, I make a motion that we approve the resolution for Quavon Days this upcoming weekend, October tenth to thirteenth.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, further discussion? There are none? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Ed.
I really do appreciate the support.
Yeah.
We appreciate you. You're putting it together.
Mary, yes?
Now we can do the signs, right?
Depends if you want to continue taking things out of order.
Oh, uh, you mean signs?
Yeah.
Well, it's E.
Well, I'm, I'm just confused. You said there's a sign up on the common right now, but we're, you're also asking for approval of signs?
Yeah, signs, signs that are on the message board don't come to the select board.
Okay.
Yeah, the message board is there for anybody that requests it used and we just put them in the schedule. So only signs that are on the easel that's on the post office site.
Maybe we'll take that out of order as well, since we're, okay.
Topical.
Okay. Steve, you wanna queue it up?
Oh, that is five E, or six E, I'm sorry. Um, we have a request from Ed Como to place signs on town property, um, in support of the Quavon Days event this weekend, so.
And there was a, your request form was filled out?
Request form was filled out, yep, correctly. I make a motion that we approve this request for Quavon Days, for the place town signs on property, town property.
Second.
Further discussion? There are none? All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for pulling this together and.
Yes, amazing.
Sit there, guys.
Do we wanna go back, um,
Yeah.
six A?
Yeah.
The approval of the warrant for the special town meeting on October twenty-second, uh, excuse me, twenty-seventh. Um, in your packet, starting on page twenty-three, we have the proposed warrant. Um, I want to point out, this is a little, um, different that this year, uh, this town meeting for the process. Typically, we would have a list of warrant articles for the select board to consider, and then we would develop the draft warrant, but because of the tight timeframe, we have a draft warrant, uh, in front of you. Um, any changes to this warrant will need to be penciled in. Um, we can type those up tomorrow or, or later this week and have at least three members of the select board sign that, that document. Um, but we, we need to have an approval tonight of a warrant, um, or we're gonna have to have a special meeting later this week. This warrant has to be posted Friday.
Okay.
So that's, that's our option. So the first, um, article is to transfer money, um, between line items for the health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
The second is to take money out of the stabilization fund. The third is to transfer money out of the overlay surplus into the health insurance fund. Uh, the fourth is an article to, um, allow for the transfer of property to the town. Uh, this was passed by our legislators in two thousand and eleven. It's the property that Mini Fenway currently resides on. Um, it's about a two-point-two acre parcel. It's an island surrounded by town property.
Mm-hmm.
It was part of the McPherson, or what we would call at the time Patrick Center property, which was a little over seven acres, and for some reason it was parceled out and not transferred with, with, um, the Patrick Center building in McPherson Garden. Um, the building has since been razed, and now we are left with the McPherson Garden property. Um, I have not been able to find anybody that, that can give me an explanation on why it didn't transfer um, after the two thousand and eleven act of legislation.
Mm-hmm.
But I was also unable to find any town meeting actions to support the transfer, um, but I did find one to support the transfer of the McPherson property. So this is the first step. I've already talked to our legislators about, um, having D Cam bring that back up, so we can have that tr- property transferred over. Um, when we do that, we're likely going to need to have some sort of a memorandum of understanding with, to Little League, um, since they operate the facility. But this has come up a few times now with grants that Little League has been trying to apply for, who's the actual owner of the property.
Oh.
So I have no issue with Little League using it. It's a great asset for the town. It's a huge draw. And I, I think, um, we should try to get this property under the town's ownership and work out an arrangement with Little League, so. That's, that's why that's on there. I'd like to move that along, um, especially with the grant cycles that are coming up. Um, Article five is a, um, some additional housekeeping in our town bylaws. Um, town council has previously opined that the town manager position, whoever that may be in the future, is the appointing authority of the finance committee members, not the town moderator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we've been practicing that already, and we just wanna clean up the town code. The other thing that we found in that article about the finance committee is that they are prohibited from being on any other committee. And we have people who are on the finance committee that would volunteer for other committees if they can. I think it's up to us to determine if there's a conflict, but if there's not, then we should allow those people to serve. Um, we struggle to get volunteers, so that makes perfect sense. Article six, um, is to formally transfer the Taja Building from the school committee back to the town, the select board, and also authorize the select board, uh, in the event that it's decided that we either wanna sell or lease that building, to have that authority to do so. So this is necessary. If we wait till May, um, it's gonna delay that process, and quite frankly, I'd like to get started on that.
Okay.
Um, Article seven is to establish a, uh, a housing trust. I'll let Lisa talk a little bit more about that. And then Article eight is a bylaw, um, that has been submitted by our fire department, um, regarding fire protection and life safety reporting. And the chief is essentially trying to put some teeth into the, the reporting requirements that he has to enforce. So I can talk about the financials if you wanna know a little more. Um, we did, the town is going to reduce its budget by sixty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, the schools are gonna reduce their budget by two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Um, the breakout for the town reductions, um, we're gonna reduce the police department wages by seventy-three hundred dollars, police department expenses by seven thousand, pool expenses by eight thousand, six hundred and fifty. That'll be moved into revolving account. DPW, DPW hired services, we're going to remove five thousand dollars from tree removal, and a reduction of eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in wages. In the fire department, we have five thousand dollars of uncommitted on-call wages that we're gonna transfer, five thousand dollars in physicals that we're not gonna use. We are going to reduce the lakes expense budget by nine thousand dollars. That'll leave them five thousand dollars. Library expenses by one thousand, five hundred, and senior center wages by one thousand, five hundred.
How are you reducing wages? Um, or is this money that was gonna go unspent anyway?
No, um, in the police department, we're gonna reduce the, um, coverage at the desk by eight hours a week. In the DPW, um, we're delaying the hiring of a position by a month. Um, the position's been vacant for about a month, so there's already some extra money there, plus we're gonna add some. So a little bit of both on that one. Um, senior center wages, um, is stipends that they, they don't expect to use, so. And that's a small amount, but, uh, we did spread this out as the best we could, you know, so we wouldn't impact any one department more than others.
Were these the same, um, expenditures, well, was this the same list that we got in the, uh, tri-board?
It is, um, but if you remember during a tri-board meeting, the schools had extra money that they were able to give up.
Yes.
So what we did is we went back and we looked through the list and we just proportioned it out and tried to lessen the impacts.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
But the categories are the same, you know, all of the different categories. So, you know, again, we also have a hundred thousand dollars coming out of, um, the overlay account that the assessors, um, released. We have a hundred and ten thousand dollars coming out of our general insurance account. That's our property and casualty insurance. Um, we saw remarkable savings on that this year. We actually, um, did a lot of work on that, leading into the budget cycle. Um, stabilization fund is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Again, that's a separate article. And, um, we're expecting to pay that, that back at, over three years. And then no town meeting votes required, but the balance of the health insurance, um, deficit will be made up of fifty thousand dollars from our reserve fund, which is a vote of the finance committee. So that's all that's gonna work out.
Well, first of all, before John says it, um, I think all of us have agreed that, um, the work that you and your colleagues have done, um, especially around the finances, um, and the help that we receive from our friends, uh, at the school committee, uh, really helped save the day. Um, we were faced with the unthinkable, and we all came together and were able to develop a workable solution. The trick is to make sure, or try to make sure, that this doesn't happen again. And if it does, that we have a contingency plan in place. Anybody else? Would you like to hear about the housing trust?
Yes.
Okay. So, did, is that okay?
Yeah, please.
Oh, okay. Um, so the housing trust came out of a year's worth of work that was, uh, done by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and, uh, community members of Belcher Town. And it comes out of fund, a funding opportunity that, uh, we were presented with, that focuses on meeting a couple of different goals. So the first goal is the grant wanted to address a concern regarding the most vulnerable populations in Belcher Town. So whatever concerns we could identify that affected those who are most vulnerable, um, that would get us the highest points. But it also needed to be coupled with, uh, addressing environmental concerns, climate. And so one of the things that, uh, we as a committee identified, and this was through, uh, interviews with, with, uh, members across Belcher Town in vulnerable, who are considered, uh, vulnerable. Uh, and that would be including veterans, that would be including the elder community, um, young families with children, I can't think, a, a whole lot of different people. And we went also to, to events including, um, our farmer's market, uh, and, and other events, without going into a laundry list. So we got a lot of feedback, and what bubbled to the top a lot was housing. That housing is, uh, an issue for a lot of people. And so the housing trust is being established so that we can address problems with people who own property and maybe their heating system is, is not efficient, or their windows need to be replaced because, uh, they're, it, they're not efficient. So whatever connections we can make between climate and, uh, people's living situations could potentially fall under the housing trust. What you won't find in the, the bylaw is anything to do with, what, you know, who, who, who we're targeting, how we're targeting, uh, what things are included, what things aren't. what things are included, what things aren't included. The bylaw is to set up the structure for for the entity. So that's why it includes things like how many members, you know, where, you know, what they're, you know, what all of the stuff that's meaty needs to be done by the work of the committee. And so if you read like the powers of the Board of Trustees, what you'll see is a lot of stuff around buying and selling, around employing advisors, agents, employees. The stuff that gives it structure without defining what the actual work will be. So I'm going to stop there because that was a year's worth of info distilled in about, I don't know, three minutes. I'd much rather understand what your questions might be.
My concern is, I read through this, it wasn't, I thought maybe it'd be good to have like a discussion on a select board meeting, like we could open this up and have, before it went on a warrant item, it should have been presented to us. I think it's being rushed through. That's probably what I'm saying most likely. I'm concerned that we're adding more duties to town jobs and town employees without knowing the effect of how many hours this is going to impact. We're already overtasked, overworked, and we don't have the resources. Like who's going to manage the account? Who's going to do all this stuff? At what hours, at what expense to the town is this going to cost?
That's a reasonable.
I'm just trying to, I don't know all those details, and I don't want to be rushed through and not think something through and miss. Like who's going to fund this account? Where's the money going to come from? I think there's some unknowns that I don't know, and I...
So the funding comes through the money that is, that's raised through the grant. So we got fifty thousand dollars. That's what we got the first year. And fifty thousand dollars was to be spent on developing a bylaw that says, yep, you know, I mean, you can read this, but it it basically says, here are the powers, here's the purpose, you know, this is the legal status, you know, meetings, but the trustees themselves are volunteers. So I think the only people, town employees that would be involved would be the well, would be the town manager. Yep, but it's the town manager
Says treasurer.
in partnership with the select board. And the, there's a, what do they call it? There's a treasurer.
It's on the Board of Trustees, right?
So the treasurer would be a volunteer, but they would need to work in consultation with our town accountant.
Yeah, our town accountant and treasurer's office are involved in this. They're to keep the funds and the payments.
Exactly. But beyond that, it's a, it's a separate entity. And they would be given money. Like, once the bylaw is passed, then we are eligible to go after up to three million dollars to support the endeavor. But without a bylaw, we lose a whole year. So the bylaw is basically the structure. What is done in it, that's up to the trustees.
Is there, do we ever, is there ever going to be a concern that the money that goes into this trust will come from the taxpayers of Belcher Town?
No, this is, this is grant-funded.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. It's a hundred percent grant-funded?
If someone wanted to give money to it.
Voluntarily.
Yeah, you know, I-
But taxpayer dollars won't be set aside from the town budget into this. Like, I did some research on this. I don't know all about it. That's why I'd like more discussion, but like South Hadley, they're setting aside taxpayer dollars to go into this account, and I don't feel comfortable with that, if that makes sense. I don't ever want that to happen.
I don't feel comfortable with that either.
I mean, I'm not against affordable housing. I want to make that clear. I just-
This is not about affordable housing. This is to make sure that if we have an elder or a veteran or a young family with kids that are living in a house with insufficient heating or windows that are not efficient, it is strictly to ensure that individuals, families, and children have additional protections as long as they fall under the rubric of climate.
But isn't it for, they have a threshold of money, like affordable housing, they have to make so much money. So it's only for one population base of low income. Isn't that what this-
They are setting the-
That's what I'm confused about.
So the trustees, these are great questions. The trustees will be the ones determining what the
Threshold is?
How much money you can make. And, you know, if there are priorities given. Like, this doesn't say anything. I'm just giving examples. It's really up to the trustees to determine what the criteria is going to be.
Not the select board.
Not the select.
I don't like that either. I guess I don't like that, because I would, I don't want to just set aside one population of Belcher Town and not, we're forgetting about other people. They might not be low-income people or people in our situations, I guess, that are middle-class who can't afford their heating costs right now, who are making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, but they're just getting by. And if the trustee said that, I'm just throwing a number out there hypothetically, at ninety thousand dollars, and these people, there's two working families, and the two couples are making a hundred and fifty thousand, they don't meet it, but they're still low, like-
Yeah, sure.
I'm just worried about that population of Belcher Town.
Apply to be a trustee. The point is that that's not what the bylaw does. The bylaw just says, this is what the purpose of the the housing trust is, is these are the people that will be invited to the table, that there's no taxpayer money involved in this, and that if they make expenditures, in fact, I'm looking at this. Did the attorney say twenty-five thousand?
They put that number in there.
Okay.
But there is taxpayer funding because we have to pay the employees to move the money in the accounts. So there is still taxpayer funding, because we're still paying the employee
Who's the employee?
to manage the town accountant and town treasurer office to move and take care of this a little bit. So there is still hours associated with this of some sort at the town level. That's what I'd like to know. What is that hour and duty that for now, we're giving additional duties to town employees, which I don't feel comfortable with, not knowing what that is it one hour or is it five hours? I guess, I don't know.
How about if we asked the town manager, how much time do you think that they would be involved in this?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
I mean, the two things I know, well, just two thoughts.
Yeah.
One is, this program is, MVP stands for most vulnerable population.
Yes.
Right? So that's the target area, is the vulnerable populations in our town, the most vulnerable. That's one thing. A second thing, there already is a model that exists that uses town resources that's just like this. It's the Belcher Town Cultural Council, because they receive grant funding from the state, it gets put into the town accounts, the town accountant tracks it and reconciles it with the council. So there's already a model.
And so how much time does, do they spend on that?
It's part of like the whole-
Well, it's going to be a function of the activity. Are we talking about a hundred projects a year, or are we talking two? I mean, every bill that comes in has to be processed, it has to be paid, so I can't answer that question.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, should we scrap this? Should I go back to MVP?
I'm just, I'm not fully against it.
Here's the thing. No, no, I understand it, but we, this is, this is, this came from the needs that came from our residents. And all the bylaw does, it says, is it sets up a structure, and it outlines what the, what the trust, the people who are doing the trust, what their responsibilities are, what Steve's responsibilities are, what the select board's responsibilities are. It does not get into who we're talking about. It does, it does, it does not get into what the what the wage limit needs to be. I don't know why I'm having trouble with the word I'm trying to get.
I mean, it's just one more task too, I see, as the town manager. We already gave him sixty-eight goals and objectives, and now we're getting another task on top of all this. I'm not saying he can't handle it either. I'm just, we don't have the town-
My question to you is basically, okay, this committee worked for a year, we got the money. Should I go back to the committee and say, I'm sorry, we can't put the bylaw on, and so we'll have to wait a year?
Yes, I think you should, because this committee has never sat in front of us.
They did. They did. They actually, they presented, they literally presented to us.
They literally presented to us.
I have never met with MVP.
They came in front of us. I remember this conversation.
Was it before we were on the board?
I don't know the answer to that, but they came in front of us, they definitely did, and talked about their process and how they chose the project that they wanted.
A previous board.
I don't know the date, but I'm pretty sure it was only a couple of months ago.
I was elected in May and it's never been before this board since I've been elected.
I'm saying, I'm not sure it came before you.
Yeah, you may have not have been here, but they definitely came, and you may have been away, but-
You missed a couple of meetings.
Yeah, but I still went through all of my agendas
I don't remember.
in red minutes.
I'm not saying I'm against, I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a really great idea.
Here's why I don't think you do, because you're saying, I don't think we should do this because we're going to put more more duties on the town accountant and on Steve, and who else?
The treasurer's office.
The treasurer. So here, and so we won't have that because of that, and I think that's a false narrative. I think that you have a point, but I don't think we should scrap this because of that, because a lot of people in town could probably benefit, maybe not you, but there are other people in town that this would, this would be very beneficial for them. And I hate to see something that is funded, you know, we're not funding it ourselves like South Hadley. We're looking at this as, if it's going to work, we need to get grant funding for it to fly.
I'm just worried about the town employees. Like, we're giving them more jobs and we're not paying them any more money, any more hours. There's no more resources available. Like, maybe if we budget during our budget season to add like a part-time position or something, and this could be one of those duties or something. So I'm just trying to think, I don't want to stress the employees out. That's what I'm concerned about.
And so by saying it sounds like we do want to stretch the employees out, and that's why I take a little umbrage with that. This is not, not recognizing that, but what, when I brought up, well, what if the trust had their own treasurer and did not talk to Steve and did not involve the accountant, for instance. And what the feedback I got was, we can't do that. We can't have two separate entities.
Because it's not legal.
Now, if I'm wrong on that, please let me know.
No, I think you're correct.
Yeah, so-
When is the next grant round?
It starts in February. And, you know, so I did think of that, but it is against, we can't have two separate finance functions. We can only have one. So, and, you know, I don't know, I'm not Steve, so I can't say, okay, for those jobs, I don't even know if union would allow this, to say, all right, you're taking this on, we'll give you x amount of extra dollars. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just, you know, we've got unions we have to worry about, we, you know, we can't do a separate program, you know, for just finances. We have to work within the structure we have. But I do understand what you're saying. And I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Has there already been a structure created so that there's a clear process for when reviews will happen, how long it would take, how much time the office would have to be able to process checks? Has that been set up yet? Because that could be a way to ensure that there is ample time for the staff, so it's not, you have five business days to turn around. Well, that wouldn't be realistic.
Well, typically accounts payable is a two-week process. The invoice comes in, it's processed, it's put in a warrant. Every week I sign a warrant. And then from the warrant, it goes to printing the checks and mailing them out. So it's at least two weeks before payments are made. That's pretty standard when doing business with municipalities. Sometimes it's longer. Depends on, sometimes, you know, when the bill is submitted, if it's midweek, then it's two and a half weeks. I don't know how much time it's going to take. It depends on a lot of factors. I guess Mike, I have a question about whether we'd even be in position to apply for those grants. Do you think we could actually set this up before February? That would be the-
Before what? February?
Does the trust have, you know, we need five members?
No, no, no. We don't have to have all this in place. All we have to do is show we have a bylaw. Then we can begin to do the work. It's, but we can't, like for instance, begin the work until we have a bylaw. And so that will be like the next huge lift, you know? Nothing can be done until the bylaw's done, so, you know.
Who developed the bylaw?
Excuse me?
Who developed the bylaw?
This was given to us by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and it was based off of two other housing trusts that are already in place in other towns. And then it went to our legal team, who made, you know, a number of corrections to make sure it reflected Belcher Town. And now it's here in front of us.
So what's the date that the MVP committee sat before us? I'm just trying to figure out, when were the updates from all the MVP committee on where they were in this process, letting us know how it was coming along, and then coming to us to formally ask for this to be added to the warrant? When did all of that happen?
I can't get into the server to get my past agenda, so I can't answer that.
So they didn't ask to have it on the warrant, but they came to us and presented the results of the work that they did, because there were public hearings, like I attended a public hearing.
What date was that, that they came?
No idea.
What were the dates of the public hearings?
Well, I mean, I did one. Well, it was a public event.
Yeah, there was a number of them. So Sarah Fortune was involved in this, our conservation administrator, and Doug Albertson and Lisa.
Yeah, Angela Passifoni from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
I mean, there was a ton of people that worked on this. This didn't just like come out of thin air. We definitely talked about this.
Leanne Conley?
So this involves like money and stuff. Why would, why would we not have like a finance committee member on it? I'm just, why would you-
Financial member on it?
Yeah. Because it involves money.
You have to apply for a grant. So the way the, so you didn't explain how the MVP program works.
Why wouldn't a trustee not be from the finance committee also, because it involves money?
I don't know. I can't. I didn't develop these bylaws. I have no idea.
Yeah, it's just statutory. It's prescriptive in state law.
Oh, so this is like state law, okay.
Right.
You have to have one of these, one of these, and then-
Gotcha.
So as Lisa mentioned, this is modeled after two other communities, and then it went to town council for a lot of editing to bring it to where it is today. So I'm comfortable with the language it's in, that it's appropriate.
I guess what, just my lack of comfort is that all of the sudden, it just shows up on a warrant however many days before a special town meeting, and I just don't feel like I got any information on this leading up to it. I mean, we're going to take two weeks to study up on nukes coming to Massachusetts, but I have to just approve this tonight? I'm just not prepared. I just, I don't even know what this is about.
Okay. Okay. Well, if that's how the board feels, then we- Well, if that's how the board feels, then we can postpone beginning any work on this until after town meeting in the spring.
Lisa, let me ask you, so what is the downfall to approving the bylaw at this point? For it, well, for it to go onto the article? So what would be the downfall to that? Because clearly, there's a lot of information that's needed to make people feel comfortable to vote on it. Because it would be up to the town.
Yeah.
So what would be the problem with putting it on the warrant at this point? And then having all that information for the town to vote on?
Um, so are you asking what's the downfall of voting?
Putting it forward, like, for instance, if that information, if everyone else feels the same when it fails?
Then do you lose the fifty thousand dollars?
Um, no, we try again in the spring. This was to allow the committee to then begin the real work of building a housing trust. So with, without the bylaw, they can't begin the work.
And the only way to have it approved is at a town meeting?
And the reason why it came now is we just got this, what, a couple of weeks ago? From Pioneer Valley. And then we had to have this go through our attorneys.
The bylaw, you mean?
Yeah. So we had to have this go through our attorneys. And the, you heard me earlier talk about the twenty-five thousand? That was because I didn't know what the number would be. One of the things that Steve cautioned us to do, and rightly so, was not include actual numbers. Because we didn't want to have to go back to town meeting every few years and say, okay, now we need to change it to this number. Because, you know, the number, the, the previous number is too low. But we had to put a number in. So, and this is literally on page twenty-six point five. "To employ advisors, agents, and employees as trustees deemed necessary, and to pay them reasonable compensation expenses." This is why I thought we might be able to do a separate finance piece, but we can't. We have to use our structure. Provided, however, that the trust shall not expend more than twenty-five thousand dollars or such other amount as may be determined by the Select Board at a duly noticed public meeting without the approval of the town manager. So we are involved in this.
And, you know, we can change that number now, if, if that's a sticking point and we want to make it lower. So that any decisions have to come back to the Select Board, we can do that. We can make it five thousand.
Yeah.
We had to plug a number in there for consideration. And if we're going to hire a consultant to do a job, twenty-five thousand dollars does go pretty quick. But we can set that low and, and they're going to have to come and turn the board. You know, that's just the way it is.
It would have to be an executive session though, wouldn't it? Because it would be someone's personal home and their request.
Oh, no, this is to hire somebody to act on their behalf as an agent.
Okay, so it would already be anonymous, okay.
Yeah, and, and there is another entity in town that, that is a charitable entity. What's it called?
The Housing Authority?
No, so...
So what's the difference with...
If you need with, a help with a heating bill or...
Oh.
Yes.
The Susan Bridgman Fund.
Thank you, thank you. So, much like the Susan Bridgman Fund, we wouldn't know who's being helped.
Yeah, you know, examples I could think of would be for a grant manager or a construction supervisor, or somebody to, you know, make sure that projects are being completed properly. You know, those, those would be the kind of agents I could see the trust hiring. And if we get to do that, then, you know, we can set that number very low and they have to come back to the board. So you could have some control over that.
How did they pick twenty-five thousand?
It was just another, you know, if you look at wages and if they were going to hire someone part-time for a year.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, okay.
I just don't, I guess my fear is I don't want this board to lose control over everything, I guess. We, I know we have the town manager who does a lot of control, but this board doesn't have a lot of control over things. I feel like we're just keep giving control of things off to everybody else.
We have a lot of control.
And we're elected to do things and...
So...
One I would, a sticking point for me would get...
Have you read this?
Yes, I have, and I've done some research, that's what I'm saying.
All right, so...
But I've never been...
Do you see the Select Board in there a lot? The Select Board and the town manager is in there a lot.
Only one Select Board though, as a trustee. So that one Select Board we...
Yeah, it's all through here. Look at the powers of the Board of Trustees.
Is one Select Board, she'll be a member of the Select Board.
We're in one, we're in two, we're in four.
One trustee, she'll be a member of the Select Board. That's who's going to get to vote, one Select Board member at a...
Yeah, but then if it's over a certain dollar amount, it comes back to the board.
Could I ask you to just look at Section Four powers of the Board of Trustees?
Yeah, but to John's point, the Board of Trustees is not the Select Board.
No.
No, we have a representative from the Select Board.
One.
One.
Right. But then, the whole Select Board...
But it's just like the CPC. We don't have any control over the grant allocation that they send out. We don't have any allocation over the Cultural Council. Like, I'm just saying, these are grant funds. This is not like a huge burden that this Board of Trustees will be applying for the grant and getting potentially up to three million dollars for our town. I don't see what, sorry, I personally don't have a problem with this and I don't see why we're arguing over having another board do the work on behalf of the town to get funding.
With our, with a representative from our, our board, and if you look at Section Four, you have the representative, but then under general powers, with the approval of the Select Board, that's not just the one representative, that's all of us. The second one, with the approval of the Select Board, to purchase, sell, lease, exchange, transfer. That's not just one, that's all of us. Number four, with the approval of the Select Board, to borrow money on such terms and conditions and from sources such as the trustees deemed advisable, that's all of us. In fact, we're in here a lot. So what we want to do is allow the person who is representing the Select Board to make sure that they're at all the meetings. And by the way, there's only a couple of meetings that they have. And, and then if there is, if, if any of the work that they're doing that's major, generally it comes with the town manager and the Select Board. In fact, if anything, I'm a little nervous that some of it's just the Select Board and not the town manager included.
Again, we're doing more, giving more jobs to Steve, like, giving him more work. That's what I'm looking at, like, we keep giving him more work, more work, but he has no help at the same time. How much can he do? And we keep, oh, here's a little piece, here's a little piece. Little pieces are now adding to multiple hours. He's supposed to work a forty-hour day and he's probably spending sixty hours working. I'm just saying, like...
Can I just say?
All of our employees are doing that.
All right. I wasn't going to say that, but I'll say this. The next year is just going to be building out what this thing looks like. So I don't see anybody, except for maybe Steve? And that's only because he goes to every meeting, all the meetings. So, you know, being involved in this, this is really up to the trustees. They, they put it together and then it comes to us.
So what's going to give on Steve's agenda then, if we send him to another meeting? That's what I'm saying, so when we sit here and say, Steve, go to another meeting, what's going to give off of his plate? So he can establish this trust? Like, what's, what's going to have to give up? I'm just trying to protect our employees, but, so I don't, how do I help Steve but help you at the same time? I'm just trying to find the middle ground.
It's who I'm trying to help.
Steve hasn't, Steve has a comment.
I'm, I'm going to say one thing, and that is, who I'm trying to help are the citizens of Belcher Town. Some of whom are employees. This is designed to help citizens in Belcher Town. That's the whole resondetta of this.
And I agree to that, I'm not saying I don't, but...
Well, you are, you're, you're saying...
I want to help people when we still have to...
So, yeah, I just, I just want to address that. I, I appreciate the, the support and the sentiment. And I'm not going to lie and say I'm not spread incredibly thin and overwhelmed at the moment. You know, there's seventeen direct reports, there's the day-to-day operations of the town. There's a lot of things that go on that occupy my time. I think that we can start to address that problem when we have an update on the goals and objectives list. I think we need to go back and look at some priorities. I know when we talked about that initially, I said, these items, you know, I look at the AA of assignments. Achievable and appropriate. They're all appropriate, they're all achievable individually, but cumulatively, they are presenting a problem. That was an unknown back in August when we talked about goals and objectives, but it's starting to reveal itself now. And I do think we need to go back and look at those items again and prioritize based on what we've started, what we've completed, what we think we can accomplish, and see what we can table. This housing trust, I think, could be a good thing for the town. I know that there's some concern because it's, it's only been in front of us for a few weeks. And I appreciate that concern. Typically, we have more time to review things. But to me, if we could get this moving, it would be a priority for me because there are a lot of people that need help in this town. And I don't want to discount that because I don't have time. I think the board needs to go back and look at priorities and reevaluate what the priorities are. And if this is a priority, then to your point, you know, what are we going to push off till next year? So I don't want my workload to be the showstopper on this. If this is what the Select Board wants, we will make it work. But we are going to have to have some concessions on other things. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
And let me reassure you, you will not be working on this. If we can't pass the bylaw, you won't be working on it at all. And if we do pass the bylaw, you will not be working on this for a year. So it needs to be the work of this committee that we're putting together, the trustees, to flesh this out. Without the bylaw, we can't get moving. One of the things that we want to be able to do is introduce this idea more by holding more community events. There were several community events that happened with this last year. I, I envy you, John, for saying what every one of us would say. No one here wants to put more responsibilities on the town employees. It is a wonderful, wonderful thing to say. But the town employees and us are here to serve the residents of Belcher Town. And this is an opportunity for us to do just that. And if we have to look at expanding the workforce, which has been talked about, then we need to go to the taxpayers and ask for that as well. If, if, if there are other departments that feel that they are spread too thin, they need to talk to Steve. Steve needs to bring it to us and we need to put it to the town people. So if there is too much on people's plates right now, then why didn't we hear about this before our town meeting and address it then? Because we still have to meet the needs, and not even just the current, but the future needs of the residents of Belcher Town.
Oh, I want to make it clear, I want to help citizens of Belcher Town. I want to help everybody in Belcher Town. Not just one pop... Not every population, I want to, it's equitable, we have to be equitable. We can't just focus on one side of the population, not the other side. We need to help out all Belcher Town residents. From the youngest citizen to the oldest citizen, that whole gap, from the poorest to the richest. What makes Belcher Town, Belcher Town? Everybody, the community, that's who I'm helping, the community as a whole. The employees are, look at them, go spend a day on the job with them. They're getting yelled at at town hall for taxes because we're increasing taxes. They're getting, because of this, decisions this board makes, or the federal government or whatever, is now getting passed on to the, our employees, the ones that we're supposed to protect. Spend a day with them in the office, you'll tell them they're overworked, they're saturated. Our DBW people, our, everybody, firefighters, I'm just saying.
But to Nicole's point, to Nicole's point...
You're saying though, there, our employees aren't coming forward. They are coming forward, they are speaking up, they are overworked.
But why, but why wasn't this done then, before town meeting? We, we've already voted in the budget. And, and to Nicole's point, you, you say I'm unfair to say that. I think it's unfair for John to say that the rest of this board is somehow not in total agreement. You know, like, no one wants to have an overworked work, workforce.
You're saying I don't support the town residents, and that's a lie. I do support all the town residents. You just said that, I don't support the town residents, and I do. That's a complete lie.
All right, it's eight thirty-five. I just want to make sure that we all know what time it is.
All I, all I want to do, I hear you, is say, and it's a complete lie to say, that the rest of the board doesn't care about employees.
I didn't say that.
But that's the inference.
You openly said, I don't support the residents. I do support the residents of Belcher Town, and all of them.
Well, now you have an opportunity to help them.
I want to help all the residents of Belcher Town.
Okay.
Equally, and equal. And have more information, not something thrown on the agenda.
What do you guys say?
So it sounds like maybe we need to have a special meeting to review the warrant items so that the folks on the other side, sorry, the ones that have questions, the ones that have questions about this, and we can find out the dates of Angela. I'm, I remember Angela being here and talking to us, maybe we can find the recording. And then we can get some more information. Is that fair?
There, there's that, or I am fully, fully on board if we want to not have this included on the warrant and wait until the spring to put it on. I'm really okay with it. This was, I'm bringing this up because this is what, what the next step is in order for the work to get done.
For me, I'm a little bit torn because I don't want to see an opportunity for our residents to have access to grant money thwarted or kicked down the road, despite what certain people up on the video screen are saying about me. But, but, and this has been an ongoing theme with me. In fact, I talked to Steve about it today. And that's communication. I kind of feel a little bit blindsided by this. It's like, why haven't we been chatting about this during all of our meetings? Or whoever the, I'm not even sure who, are you the liaison to MVP?
Yes.
Like, I, I just, like, I guess I would have thought I, I would have thought I would have heard you say, guys, we got the bylaw from PVPC, we're going to, we're ready. Like, just, I, it kind of just feels like it just magically appeared right at the eleventh hour of a, of a special town meeting.
Well, it did, so...
That's what's not sitting right with me.
And, and you know, I agree. And that's because we did get it, like I said, a couple of weeks ago. This was, you know, what, what we wanted to use was what other towns have used. And then have our legal team, look at it. Wait a minute, so that just happened literally this week.
Okay, so maybe this is a little premature.
And it, and it could be, which is why I'm saying maybe we wait, you know?
When something is going on with branding or with Communications Committee, I mean, we see Ed, Ed Camo in here all the time. We see the Branding Committee in here. Where's MVP? Where are they? I haven't heard from them. Maybe that one time that maybe I was on vacation, maybe that was the day, I don't know.
Well, I will say that what we did do is come back and say the housing trust was picked. That, that was brought up at this meeting, because I said it, and...
What was brought up at this meeting?
That the idea that the committee picked as a group was a housing trust. And I came back and said, that's...
Oh, that you mean that the MVP committee picked?
Yes, and so that was, that was, that was the work last year. That was what, what the idea was. And so I did communicate that with, with this board. And the next step after that was to create a bylaw so the work could get done. So, you know, if you want to, I, I'll do whatever you want. You know, John, I'm sorry that we had words. I, I, I don't feel like it's, has anything to do with us personally. I think we're just heated, and so maybe we take it offline.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, I'm not against the citizens of Belcher Town. I don't... I don't want that to be the staple across the papal, paper tomorrow or whatever. I mean, I would support, I support the low income housing, I support the affordable housing, but I still want to support the, the employees of our town at the same time. And giving them more work and support Steve, giving them more work, what has to give? I don't know that answer. To support this, I need to know what's giving up to support this, on the other hand. So how do we keep everybody happy but not push more work on town employees without giving them?
I would suggest maybe that.
I just want to protect everybody equally.
You think about it, so, because I, I tried to come up with an alternative, but we have to use town, we have to use the financial system, it can't be separate.
And I get what you're saying now, and I, and I support that, we should, if it's a town program. But what's going to give on the town side? What work is going to give them so these, another job can be taken, taken over by a town employee? And I'm fine with that, but I don't know what's giving up. So what are we going to give up? Paving, I'm not throwing, paving the road, Steve's not going to be able to go to a meeting for cultural council because he has to deal with this. Steve's not going to be able to go to this because he has to deal with this. What do we give up but not affect his job performance at the same time? I'm, I'm concerned about that. If I was in his position, I'm putting myself in his shoes, what am I giving up to make us happy as a board but fit everybody's needs? I don't know that answer. What do we feel as a board that we're going to give them up and not hold them to so we can get this through? So this now becomes a priority versus economic development, for example. What's more important to us as a board, economic development or MVP? Pick one.
Okay.
This is the seed project phase?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Is this the seed project phase of this whole situation?
Oh, we did phase one, we did phase two, we did, we're on phase three.
What are you both reading, just for everyone to know?
Just looking at the MVP two-point-O process on the desktop, I'd say.
So the way I feel at the moment is I don't have a problem with it being on the warrant. However, at the moment, I don't think it will pass. Because I think that it's pretty clear that there's a lot of questions about what is this? What is the process? Where is the transparency? So, and even the title alone of affordable housing, I think will raise eyebrows, honestly. Just because it's not necessarily accurate with how things are being laid out at the moment. So I would be fine with it being on the warrant, but I think there's a lot of homework to be done to be able to give supplementary information for people to know what they're voting on.
That's fair. What do you think, Steve?
I think Whitney makes a good point. There's probably going to be a lot of questions. You know, there's a lot of questions amongst the five of you. And when this goes to the town meeting floor, it could be the same questions. There hasn't been a lot of outreach yet in public awareness made to this and what it is and what it will accomplish. So that could be a real issue. So it's a, it's a roll of the dice.
Okay, it could be misinterpreted too, that they might, that we have a special town meeting for, to move funds around for the health insurance, and they may think that we snuck this one in, you know?
Well, I don't want to do that. I'm, I'm not interested in that. I'll go back to the committee and say, what, do you want this to?
We need more education to the community about this project and what it's, and result, and like, what this will be do.
Can they come before us too? Is that something we can schedule so we can?
Well, here's the thing. Maybe I'm not being clear. The trustees are the ones that are going to develop what, what they're going to do and not do. So anybody who says that they are speaking for what the housing trust is going to do is not telling the truth. This is simply to set up the structure so that those conversations can begin.
So do we need to hear instead from PVPC?
Sure, I don't know.
I mean, who, there's got to be an authority on how these things are formed and operated that can better educate us.
There, there are, but I would caution you because, to John's point, you know, South Hadley's using taxpayer money. We're not suggesting that that's something we want to do here. Do we want to hear from South Hadley? You know?
No, I didn't ask, I don't want to hear from South Hadley.
Yeah, there are a couple, there are, there are a lot of communities that are developing housing trusts. This one would be specific to Belcher Town.
How do we ensure that, that Belcher Town will never be taking taxpayer dollars, local taxpayer dollars to fund this? Like, how can we know that that would be the permanent intent?
So, I mean, I'm, I'm just, this is the thing I'm looking at, it's all using these grant funds. And they tell you all of, there's a very strict process and it's laid out by the government. That's a different, that isn't the MVP program. They develop their own.
It is.
It's their housing trust, though. That's what I searched, was their housing trust, similar to this. I looked for a local community and I was doing research on this. South Hadley popped up, I read it, and they have a plan and a goal that they'll use so much taxpayer dollars for the next ten years or five years. And their whole, there's like thirty pages of documents, whatever, or forty-page document that you can read. I mean, each community has, not each community, not every community in Massachusetts has a housing trust. I want to make that clear. So I looked for a local one around us that I could mirror. South Hadley's similar to us in size and population and structure. So that's why I did my research, and I, I guess I don't know everything about it. And maybe that's my unknown going into this. And I'm confused, maybe, that's more. If I'm confused, a lot of our residents are going to be confused too. I think Whitney said the great, probably said it right. Town meeting, it might not pass because there's so much unknown answers, we don't.
Yeah, all right.
And, and one more question, Steve, does this need two-thirds or a simple majority at town meeting?
I think it's simple majority. I'll have to double check that, but zoning is different thresholds, but I think this is a simple majority. Bylaws are usually a simple majority.
I mean, I don't like the twenty-five thousand dollar number either, but that's.
You don't like the what?
Twenty-five thousand dollar number, I think it's too high. That's, I think that should be lower.
Well, I mean, based on what everyone's saying, and, and look, I think you've given great counsel. I think that we need to wait until spring so that we can work through a lot of what you've said. You know, you've brought up great points. I, you know, I really do need to hear your feedback. You know, it's, I think the work of the committee is sincere. They represent all different walks of life in our community. And of everything they heard in the, during the special events that we held, housing was the number one concern. And so it was a no-brainer to go with housing. I would be happy to go back and just say, let's wait until spring. I'd, I'd like you to put together your questions so that I can bring it back to the committee and say, this is why it didn't go through. And this is what the committee would need to, to understand, to feel good about supporting a bylaw so that the work can begin.
Can they come to us and, and give, you know, I, the, the history of how this developed, where they're at, I just, everything, just like a normal committee norm, just like a committee normally comes to us and says, hey, this is what we're working on, we need your support. That's really what, what I need to see.
Sure, I can bring that back to the committee and see who wants to come and, and put together a presentation.
It doesn't even have to be formal.
Well, I think it does, it sounds like it needs to be formal. And, and that's fine, but I, I want your input into, I'm too close to it, you know? So it would be good to get your input on what you need to see in the presentation. And, you know, the, the, the fifty thousand dollars will not go to waste because that will be what the money will be spent on. I'm not even sure, the fifty thousand actually has already been spent. That was the work we did last year.
Yeah, that was.
So I don't know, I guess we'll be applying for new money to do this work for this year.
But you need the bylaw to apply, and so you'll miss out on this grant cycle.
Yes.
And by you, I mean the royal committee, they will miss out on this grant cycle. But we were never going to have access to that grant money had it not been for the special town meeting anyway, right?
Yeah.
So it's not like we are thwarting something, there was just a possibility of being able to access more grant money. But we're not going to rush it.
Well, we had, there, there was tell several months ago that we probably would have a fall town meeting. And I'd been pushing to get the information we need so that we could have the bylaw. And, so that's what I just came out of.
Okay.
But it won't go to waste because the money will be spent to do what you're suggesting.
Okay.
And.
Who manages the fifty thousand dollars now, I guess? How does that, who's managing the fifty thousand dollars now?
The fifty thousand is already spent.
But who managed it, like who?
That's through, well.
The accountant, right? They got it as a grant and we spent it through the town.
Gotcha.
Well, actually, I think it's actually through Pioneer Valley Planning. Because Angela would always say, this is how much money we have left.
Okay, then maybe it was managed through PVPC.
Yeah.
Well, and I don't want to get into it, but I would be curious, where did that money go? How was it utilized, you know?
Well, this was a grant money, so it didn't come from Belcher Town. And the grant money was used to develop community events. There was one that, that, you know, that targeted just the recovery community, for instance. There was one that targeted people in the elder community. So, and there was, we came to the.
They went to the farmer's market, they went to the.
The Halloween party. Yeah, we did, there was a lot of outreach, so.
They had a meeting at the town hall, that's fine.
No, yeah, no, I knew, but I didn't, I know it sounds silly, I didn't know any of that costs money.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I know it sounds silly, but like, that, of course, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if the committee would be prohibited from applying for funds for other projects.
Well, actually, there is another project that I was going to approach them about. And I've already gotten a commitment that they will start that process with me in January. But there are other competing priorities that might, you know, I, I don't want to get into it. But it may be better just for us to miss the January.
All right, so now it's eight fifty-three, so what are we doing?
Excuse me?
It's eight fifty-three, trying to keep you on track, Lisa.
I appreciate your insight on this, I don't want to say that publicly, I appreciate your insight, I have no hard feelings. We'll go to lunch and we'll be fine.
We'll be fine, and, and I just wanted to go out there that I support town employees.
Can we make a commitment to each other that when we're going through our, what's it called? Our, what we've done for the past couple of weeks?
Our member reports.
Member reports, that if there's, I know we always want to fly through them because we want to go home and, but if there's something going on within a particular committee that it would just help all of us to know about, that, that we just start taking a few extra seconds to just say, this is what we're working on. I'm guilty of it, I don't do it either, but I feel like we should all be doing that.
I think that's a great idea.
I mean, Steve does it in his report, which is twelve times longer than ours. But if we can do that, I think I would feel much more comfortable when something like this pops up.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so back to discussion items.
Well, we have to make a decision, right? Because we need to post it on Friday.
Yeah, unless we're not still competing.
Oh, yeah.
So we can approve the warrant without this article tonight. And then I can have the language revised, and three members need to come in to sign it before Friday. We can approve it as is, I don't know if there was any other changes on the warrant, but if we're just excluding this one article, then we'll have a warrant with seven, with seven articles total, not eight. I'll delete this off the, the final document and sign it. So if you could vote to approve the warrant with the exclusion of the affordable housing trust bylaw for the time being, then we can move forward, we don't need to have a special meeting.
Do we have to vote on each article, like?
No, you can vote on the warrant.
All right, well, do I hear a motion?
I move that we endorse the warrant articles with the exclusion of Article Seven for special town meeting to be held October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
And our delay to be renumbered Article Seven.
And Article Eight will be renumbered Article Seven.
Do I hear a second?
Nobody wants to second it, what are we doing?
I'm nervous, I don't know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm feeling so on the fence about it.
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Seconded by Jen, further discussion?
The last thing is, I'm just feeling, I'm just, I, I see all the reasons, I know that I've given the reasons why I think we need more information, I'm just hesitant, I hate, I hate holding us back from possibly getting more money from grants. That's the only thing I'm worried about.
I agree, I totally agree.
But we'd have to, even the twenty-five thousand dollar, though, I'm, that's my other, would be amendment to it.
Look, I don't feel comf- I'm saying this, I don't feel comfortable trying to ram something through. If you're not comfortable with it, then, you know, we, we can, we, well, actually, we could, what did you say, we could have three people or?
Well, we need three people to sign the law, but we need to vote tonight. Otherwise, we have to have a special meeting and have a vote.
Okay, we could have a special meeting, or we can.
But by Friday, though, be a special meeting by Friday.
I need to have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or Wednesday.
Well, we have to post forty-eight hours, so if we posted a meeting tomorrow morning, we could have a meeting Thursday morning at the earliest.
But again, this, to me, feels rushed. I mean.
Are you in favor of taking it off after this conversation?
Don't make me do that. I mean, I, it's, it's hard for all of us. I have committee members that are, that are listening to this as well.
I hear you, you know, I, I want to, I want to be, you know, cognizant of all parties here. I mean, there was a committee that worked really hard for a really long time on this project. And I hear what you said, Whitney, and I hear the concerns that you guys are bringing up. So, I mean, you know, the options in front of us is take it off, put it down in May when we have more time and you have more time for education.
And I think we could answer some more questions at that point with the town side also. But how badly do you feel about it? Like, on a scale from one to ten?
I think, honestly, I, I, I want to do the will of the board. I mean, I don't think I could have put up much more of a fight. I've, I've, I've said it all, and it's the will of the board.
Can we lower that number, or does that have to go all the way back?
I think we can add it.
Well, we can change, if we're not going to take it up at this town meeting, we can lower it later. We can talk more about it and, and whether or not it makes sense. You know, again, if they were going to hire a part-time person to help manage the trust, you know, over the course of a year, that's not a lot of money.
And I, I think I would want to specifically add language to the bylaw that would be difficult to reverse if, except for at town meeting, that this in no way will not ever come from taxpayer, local taxpayer dollars. I'd want to have that added to it so that the only way that we're ever going to be reversed is with a vote at town meeting.
Yeah, so if we were to approve this tonight, we could change that number to twenty-five hundred dollars, to answer your question. To answer your question, that's something I can talk to town council about if we're not going to take this up at this town meeting and try to add something in. But I want to remind you that taxpayer money can only be put in this by a vote of the finance committee select board. It has, it would have to go through the budget process to even get to town meeting.
I do think adding that to the article, though, Lisa, could help to push it through when it does get on the warrant, giving, giving the residents the reassurance that this isn't going to come, this isn't going to show up on my property tax bill.
Can I ask one more question? Let's say this goes on the special, and let's say it passes. Is there anything to say that we can't revise it in May and they can also apply for their grant funding?
Oh, bylaws can be revised at town meetings, yes.
So
That's very good.
That is a, another path forward if we wanna go that route, just to get it so the committee can maybe potentially apply for the grant, knowing that we wanna change it in the fall?
I'm not comfortable with that.
I mean, not the fall, spring.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that because we, we have so much come across our desk. I'm afraid it'll get lost in the weeds and
Oh, we have a parking lot now? We could put it on the parking lot, we could put it on
Okay, in the interest of time, um, I'll be the tie-breaking vote to say uh, that we wait until um, April, um, until May.
No, she didn't call for a vote, she's just saying.
So, uh, do I, could you make your motion again?
Um, I move that we endorse the warrant articles with the exclusion of Article Seven, moving current Article Eight to Article Seven for special town meeting to be held October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Oh, aye.
Okay, five, zero, zero. Thank you, everybody, it was spirited. Um, can we uh, move the gold cane for our next meeting? And uh, do you get a, a health insurance update?
You missed B, C, and D.
Which one?
B, C, and D, but do you need to go? Because I can't take over the
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Are you kidding?
Yeah, um, so why don't we take a five-minute break? I'm gonna uh, tell our listeners at home that um, I need to leave to take care of my mother-in-law, um, and Jen Turner will be taking over as uh, active chair. Um, thank you very much, we'll be reconvening in five minutes.
It's nine oh two, so we'll be back at nine oh seven.
Good evening, welcome back from our little break, Lisa's gone. We're gonna move on to discussion action item B, review zoning board of appeals. Appeal application for eleven Sunny Crest Lane, Belcher Town. So Did everyone?
With any request from the ZBA, the select board is required to report back. This one in particular is for a um, family that owns livestock chickens on a parcel of property that does not meet the zoning requirements of being at least an acre. Um, in fact, this is about a quarter of an acre, it's in an open space community development.
Okay.
Um, and the applicant is trying to get relief from the ZBA to be allowed to keep the livestock. I visited the site earlier, uh, excuse me, late last week. I don't feel it's an appropriate place for livestock.
Did you say appropriate or inappropriate?
It's not appropriate, inappropriate would be the term. It's very, it's a very condensed neighborhood, it's still under development, there's vacant lots, but I think when it's fully developed, it's gonna only become a problem. Uh, secondly, I think that it's a bad precedent to set because we have other open space developments in town, such as um, Dana Woods, Hickory Hills,
Yeah.
Um, um, Kennedy Drive off of uh, one eighty-one.
Yeah.
And if we start allowing livestock to be raised on a quarter of an acre, it's gonna just become a ripple effect. So I would advise the select board to um, report back um, to the applicant's appeal.
Um, yeah, I just wanna make a comment, so I am the liaison for the egg commission, and so I sat in their meeting where they discussed this on, last week sometime. Anyway, um, and they unanimously are not in support of this appeal either.
Any thoughts?
I ask one simple question, and maybe, maybe it's not our concern, but if a, if a home has livestock and they're asked to remove them, what happens to them? Do they surrender them? The, the animals?
I would say they'd have to rehome them.
Okay.
I would assume they'd have a specified amount of time to comply.
Okay. Okay, just curious.
Okay. Alright, uh, I'll entertain, so we need a motion to?
Um, I move that we remand the ZBA appeal from Kayla Bucy of eleven Sunny Crest Lane back to the ZBA.
Second. Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? All abstaining, okay.
You abstain?
Yes, no, I didn't abstain.
Four, four, zero, zero.
Yep, four, zero, zero. Sorry, I'm not used to doing this, I haven't done it in a while.
And then uh, six?
Six C, request to set annual winter parking ban, that's a request from our DPW director. I think it's normal uh, at this time of year, so what are the dates that she's requesting?
Yeah, you'd ask, it's, it is, this is routine business, we vote on the same um, ban every year. It is on page sixty-three and sixty-four.
November first to April first.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we set the winter parking and impediment ban for the upcoming twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six winter season, running November first, twenty twenty-five through April first, twenty twenty-six.
I second it.
Okay, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll like anybody against, and anybody abstaining, okay, four, zero, zero.
Okay, um, A, B, C, D. Okay, we have a request from Kristen Ho regarding Red Ribbon Week, um, she would like to put signs up on town property.
Uh, I'd like to, can I make a comment on this?
What was it?
Can I make a comment, or not yet?
Absolutely.
I just don't know why they're not using the sign form that we talked about, this and the next one. I'm just, I know one person did it, and we approved it, but we put the new sign form into place, shouldn't we have referred them back to the sign form?
Yeah, that's probably my fault for not following through on that.
I just wanna stay consistent with the, the process and not change it.
Okay. You said the next one, so did you, were you saying?
Two of these, there's two in a row.
Well, Ed Como, we already did that one.
You said Ed did do his form.
He did, but there's Kristen and there's Boat, there's two.
Oh, there's Kristen and, that's the same one.
Kristen is Boat.
Oh, so there's two, oh, gotcha.
There's only two.
Same person, sorry.
One used the form, one did not use the form. That is correct, and I think it's such a new thing that it's a learning curve probably for that, so that's what I would say about it.
Just wanna make a note.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
No, it's a good point.
I'll be more attentive today.
I'll make the motion that we approve the signs for Kristen Hoag and Boat.
For?
For October twenty-fourth and removed by October thirty-first.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, um, any comments? Uh, this is for Red Ribbon Week, okay, uh, which is highlighting what now again? A nationwide campaign that highlights the importance of living a drug-free life, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Nope, okay, four, zero, zero. Uh, we deferred the gold cane to uh, another date. Is there a health insurance update? Do we wanna do that, or are we gonna defer that?
I can speak really quickly on this, it's, this is gonna be on the agenda as going forward.
Okay.
Um, just to give us an opportunity in case there's questions, um.
Okay.
What I can tell you right now is Joanne and I are still working with our broker. Um, we're preparing to go out to bid just to test the market.
Okay.
Um, that would only, let me back up. Um, we are obligated to remain in the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust until June thirtieth of twenty-six, regardless of what happens with rates or plans going forward. The only way to get out before that is if they become insolvent, and we are making contingency plans for that. Um, so we are working with our broker, we are preparing a bid so that we can test the waters to see what rates are out there, it doesn't mean we're going to switch on June thirtieth. Currently, our, our last evaluation, the rates seemed very favorable at the trust even with this increase. I shared that information with everybody. Um, but we don't wanna be behind the eight ball, so we are pursuing all options. But again, it's, it's early, um, we're also talking to MYA, which is the Mass Interlocal Insurance Agency that's administered through the MMA. We're also talking to the GIC, so we're covering all of our bases.
Okay.
And I think that's the message I wanna give you tonight, is that we haven't just sat back and waited.
Yeah.
But I do think that the trust plan and rates are still competitive. So right now, it's just monitoring a situation that's very fluid, to make sure that they remain solvent and that our employees still have coverage, so.
Okay, can I ask, uh, two questions on that? So, I thought that the rule to leave the trust in the middle of the year was to just give thirty days' notice?
I don't believe so. There's, there is, there was some confusion on that, but I don't think we can get out. We have to give them ninety days' notice from the renewal.
Ninety, yeah. Okay, and then the second question is, on the flip side of that, if they decide, oh, we didn't collect enough money from this additional twenty percent that we took from the towns, um, and they decide that they are not going to be solvent through the end of the year, how much notice are they gonna give us if we have to turn around and go looking? So, you know, that's a two-way street.
Yeah, and that, and that's why we are um, making sure we have options ready to go.
Okay.
Yes, because, um, a lot of the plans that we would enroll in have open enrollment periods, just like an individual one. So if we don't have um, contingencies in place, we could be left looking for those contingencies.
Yeah.
The one immediate source for insurance would be a private carrier.
Yeah.
We would have to go out to Blue Cross Blue Shield, or Aetna, or a company like that directly, um, rather than join a, another consortium. So, you know, it's a very fluid situation, we're spending a lot of time on it.
I imagine.
So
Thank you.
We'll have another update in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna give a highlight out of your report, or do you wanna skip it?
Yeah, I can go over a few things quickly, um, there is some highlights in here. Linda Laduke and I um, applied to the State LEAP program, which is Local Early Stage Actionable Planning Grant Program. And we're looking for forty thousand dollars to do a corridor study of the state street area. It's kind of a post-construction follow-up to see how the traffic flows are. Um, see what worked, what could be improved, and there'd be a component of that that would look at the future development in that area, and what things we should be planning for. Um, I know when projects are presented, a lot of people ask about the traffic, so we wanna make sure that we have those answers ahead of time, so we're hopefully get that grant. We're still working on um, an AI draft policy. We had a meeting last week with representatives from UMass that are working on um, AI integration into the government workforce, um, so we have some pretty high-level support. We, we'll talk about that more later before next week. Sports Haven's moving along quickly, um, since the beginning of August, we've expended about four hundred thousand dollars on infrastructure work. Tremendous amount of work taking place, a lot of my time, just wanted to get that out there. Right now, it looks like the majority of the sewer, um, pipe is in the ground, they're gonna begin water work pretty quick. Um, they're gonna be demoing some units um, to make room for a new water storage tank. These are all things that are, that are moving along pretty quickly, so it's a, it's a good um, project. If anybody would like to take a ride down and just see, it's, you know, it, it's good to see, just let me know, and I can, I can take you down there. We did finalize the nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar EPA grant that we got for Sports Haven as well. That money's available, we're working now to get that appropriated towards additional work. Route nine and Allen Road, I know that's a big topic for people. Not quite a year ago, we had a meeting with Mass DOT and Representative Saunders, um, I thought it went very well. There were some commitments made from Mass DOT to look at the um, vehicle speeds along the corridor. The collection of data is complete, um, it was analyzed. The majority of vehicles are going um, the speed limit, but there are quite a few that are going above. Um, the next step in this was to do some survey work, and Mass DOT was supposed to start that, I think, last week, uh, start doing some surveying, so things are progressing, I know, slow, but um, we are still
Is there like an end, an end goal there? Like, what do they wanna see happen there that will be the solution?
I think what they're keying in on is trying to improve the sight distance um, at the intersection, so motorists approaching Route nine from Allen Road would have better sight lines. I don't think a determination has been made that that's the, the cause of the accidents, but it's something to look at right now.
What about making it like a one-way street, like just going down, has that ever been thought about?
There is, there has been some talk about that, it, it's something that, um, if justified, could be a, um, a viable option. But right now, you know, they're still in the study phase. But right now, you know, they're still in the study phase.
Gotcha.
I did have a meeting last week with the Massachusetts Inspector General Jeffrey Shapiro. Um, it was a really good meeting. Um, he came out to visit us. Um, the Inspector General's office, um, concerns itself with, um, municipalities and their spending of money. Um, they make sure that there's no fraud, there's no, um, oh, it's late, um, nefarious activities going on. They manage the procurement laws, so when we talk about bidding in quotes in chapter thirty and chapter one forty-nine, that's what their office oversees. They also do a lot of training for purchasing. So it was a nice meeting. Um, it went on for an hour and we talked a lot about the current laws, um, pinch points, you know, things that could be better. So it was, it was nice. He's, he's actually on a tour, um, of Western Mass to try to, you know, improve relations. I think the biggest news here is the Pathfinder. Um, you know, obviously, uh, the news is out. Kate is working on a press release locally. Um, Pathfinder worked on a lot of press releases with the, um, larger media venues, so there's been a lot of information out there. But the big news is that, um, after two years of, um, talk, all the stars lined up with the schools voting to close the school. And I want to just let everybody know, this conversation started when there was a proposal to build a new school. In closing, the Cold Spring School was a component of that. We weren't working behind the scenes to try to close the school and, and write a lease, um, out of the blue. This is something that started two years ago. Um, we've spent a lot of time on this. And when the school department determined that their student population would no longer support that school being opened, we were already in discussions, already knew what would fit. Um, we didn't know if it was gonna be this year, next year, or five years. But Pathfinder was very interested. Superintendent Nuda has been very, um, passionate about expanding into Belcher Town. And we were able to move quickly to make sure that this building won't be vacant, it won't fall into disrepair. It's not gonna cost the town money to maintain it or repair it, and we have an occupant that's gonna be viable. The plan is to bring technical offerings to Belcher Town. Um, he does want to have expanded technical offerings. I think I could bring him in, um, at a future meeting to talk to the board more about that, when we can fit it in our agendas. Cause I don't want to speak out of term, but it's very exciting news. The technical ac-, um, programs versus academics, um, they rotate weeks, for those who don't know. So one week, anybody in the programs that are located in Belcher Town, they could spend a week here and then a week in Palmer at the main campus for the academics and then keep rotating back and forth. So I think it's a win-win for the town and, um, you know, we're gonna continue working on, on a lease with them, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody.
Um, can I just go make a request? When Kate does that press release, can you ask her, I know sometimes she does this, sometimes she doesn't, to push that out to the two forums because there is some misinformation floating around on one of the forums that we sold the building and we're pocketing the money and that we're getting, Belcher Town is getting five million dollars to do the repairs and none of that is true at all. So I just want to make sure it goes out further than just the town's page.
Yes, yeah. It, so just for people who are watching very clearly, it's, um, it is proposed as a lease. And there are, there is grant money available at the state level for regional school systems to, um, improve facilities upwards to five million dollars a year. That application will be filed by Pathfinder, not the town, so that money would go with them. So that's all I have unless you have questions.
Um, I just have one, status of the grant writer position?
Oh, um, final interviews are this week. And, um, I did want to mention grants, since you brought it up. We received a thirty thousand dollar grant to, we got a hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant to design the roof on Tadjo. We got a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant to, um, review our zoning, which is our, um, goals and objectives. We got a thirty thousand dollar grant, um, to do a marketing plan for, um, the town. We were denied, um, the water and sewer design grant for parcel D, which is the area over by, um, Anytime Fitness. We did not get the grant for the water and sewer to six and eight Berkshire Avenue. We did not get the main grant for the Tadjo roof, which would have been about two million dollars. And we also applied for upwards of two million dollars to complete the Sports Haven infrastructure and we were denied there. Those notices came in today, so disappointing news. But we did get some grants, so we are moving forward with those.
Can we use some of the CPC for, for the Sports Haven project for loan cut?
Yes, yeah, and I think there will be an application going in.
Okay.
You didn't talk about the big grant we got, the Hop Culver.
Oh.
Two point seven million dollar grant that we got.
Still under embargo?
No, that's public. That one's public.
I think the other ones are embargoed.
Anyhow, um, yes, Linda, um, working with our consultants have, has been successful in getting two point seven million dollars for a bridge to be constructed over to Hop Brook, which is on Warren Ray Road.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that project's gonna be, um, under final design and bidding anytime now.
That's great, thanks.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that was, that was a good one. I forgot about that one. So that's all I have.
It's only nine thirty, so possibly.
Can I ask one other? And it might have to be another time, but we haven't heard any updates on the tax, um, work-off program for seniors. Have there been good applications?
Yeah, so we had, um, two people participate in this fiscal years program. Um, that's just wrapping up. Um, next fiscal years program is just opening up for applicants.
Okay.
And I have not seen, um, or heard any activity on that yet.
Interesting.
The, um, voluntary contributions, um, those will be on the December tax bill. The veterans' contributions are gonna be managed by, um, the treasurer-collector and the veterans' agent. The senior and disabled, um, um, contribution program is managed by a committee. The committee is fully, um, staffed at the moment. We have all the members that we need, so I'm gonna be calling for a meeting. They need to set up their own criteria as far as income levels for low-income, um, disability, you know, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
So their task over the next couple of months is going to be to establish their guidelines in an application process. And then, um, starting, beginning of January, the money is hopefully start rolling in through donations.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, thank you. Uh, review of weekly mail? Anybody wanna pull anything out or no? It's fine if you don't want to. It's late.
I'm gonna hold off.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, uh, individual board members' reports?
You want me to go first? I can go first, sure. I'll go. Uh, nineteen through twenty-one September was the annual Belcher Town Fair. So excited. One hundred sixty-six fair, I'm very excited. Uh, before that though, that same day, I volunteered to help with crossing guards. Steve was there, school officials were there. Uh, Mr. Cameron was there, a bunch of the executive members of the school staff was there. But we helped all the kids cross the street safely, which was a huge highlight. Parents liked it. Then the buses came up from Chestnut Hill. I just want to explain this whole process because it's very thoughtful and considerate for the community as a whole. All, two buses full of kids got off the thing. Out of all these kids, one kid got lost in the shuffle, not the kid, but the parents. So Mr. Cameron showed a lot of compassion and worked with this kid to see this here and the kid's crying and he was able to corral and get it all. Matter of five minutes, we found the parent, but it was, it was cool to see. I just want to say that. But if you didn't attend the fair, I definitely, next year it'll be there. October twentieth, we'll have new dates, so I just want to get it out there. Well, October twentieth this year, we'll have the meeting, the fair committee meeting, and they'll set the new dates, so.
I thought you meant next year.
Yeah, no, no. So get excited. We all got the march and the parade. That was fun, but, sorry, I don't want to get hung up on that. The twenty-third of September, I went to the school committee meeting in person to thank the school committee for what they did for the students and the whole fair thing. Uh, twenty-five September, I went to communication committee. Uh, we talked about the AI policy Steve brought up and CPC funds. They're trying to, they tried to get CPC funds to put new town signs up as entering Belcher Town, but CPC didn't approve it. It doesn't fall in their criteria. They're looking at about six thousand dollars of signs, so they're trying to work out a new sign. You see all those like welcome to Belcher Town signs, but like they used to be old wooden ones. Uh, red and gold, so they're trying to redesign them and get one for all the major entries of town.
Doesn't fall into wayfinding, does it?
So they're working on that still. Also, side note on that, how can we get like Esther in the clock tower to like videotape that and give the whole like BCTV experience of that, like?
Oh, we can set that up.
So I just want to get that on our agenda to like get that, even those select board members, if you've never been up.
I'm sorry.
The clock tower, you ever been up there and like videotape this thing? It's kind of cool, it's historicals, but it's, it kind of gives something back to the town.
So the, the clock was constructed by Turrant and Marine. It's one of probably three known clocks that, that company made.
Yes, I learned that on branding committee.
Very, very rare. Um, it's all mechanical and it's been in the church steeple for, you know, many years. And, um, you know, I don't know if it belongs to Smithsonian or in our stonehouse, but, you know, I would almost like to see it taken out of there and put on display where someone could actually, you know, view it and appreciate it. Um, one of the most amazing things about the clock is the clock room itself.
Yeah.
The clock keepers from the beginning of time, quite literally, have been leaving notes on the wall.
Oh, my gosh.
And pencil and pen and magic marker and, you know, over the years, all the different, um, clock keepers have put their initials or names and the years that they served. So there's a bit of history there that people don't know about. And if the weather is appropriate, you can go all the way up to where the bell is, um, and actually see the bell itself and the striker. So it's definitely something worth videoing and, um, you know, showcasing without a doubt.
We go, can we go up there? Can we have a field trip?
So you want to have like a?
Yeah, I would like, and I think we should capture all that historical knowledge. I don't think it's been captured, but I just thought of this great idea.
Lots of cool stuff in town that people don't know about.
Something a feature. Uh, twenty-six September, I met with a library as a new select board member. They always invite a new li-, new select board members over. So I met with Cindy in the library trust. That was a good.
She went to the board meeting?
The bo-, uh, no, they just had a one-on-one with me to explain to me how the library works. And I didn't realize that for every card you have, if you don't get a book, they get funds for it. Like, that's how the state funds it. So even if you don't go to the library, go get a card. So that's my little punt to them. It's like, hey, even if it's a dollar, two dollars, it's still funding that we didn't have. So get a card for every person in your household. Board of officers, I didn't go. They had a quick five-minute meeting and they went to executive session, so they didn't want me there. It was, then it was a waste of all of our time, so they had to go into executive session, just let everyone know. Uh, they're sending a tax rate and they had to approve all the tax rebates for everybody. Uh, one October, I met with Steve. We drove around, looked at the sports fields. That's been a hot topic with the residents. So we're trying to look at it with the best scenario we can fix with the sports fields. We're on it. As long as I assure that Steve's resting on, working on it. Uh, we looked at Javish Brook. That was a big thing with the parking, because as we get closing, I, Steve and I had some suggestions. He's working with Linda. So just let the school committee know. Steve is working on that too. Uh, and I went to Sports Haven, as Steve said. I encourage everyone to go over there and check it out and see the progress. It's night and day. Like, it, if you haven't been there in a while, it's dramatically changed. Three October, I went to Pathfinder, just as Steve said. And four October, I don't want to take anyone's fence. I'll let you guys talk about the Lake Wallace stuff, but that's my.
It'd probably be a shorter list if you told us the things you didn't.
I'm engaged. I'll let you talk about Lake Wallace, but it was fun.
Well, just so you all know, I got lost at the fair when I was six years old. And I walked myself down the common to the old police station and they drove me home. And my mother was very angry, so I know how that feels. So September seventeenth, I attended the EDIC meeting. September twenty-fourth, I partially attended the Boys and Girls Club meeting. I got sick and had to leave. I don't know that a heck of a lot was accomplished there, um, Steve. I mean.
No, I think, um, it was not well-attended.
No.
It was a rainy night. It was an evening. The people who are interested in the Boys and Girls Club or YMCA's for that matter, have children at home, so it was a bad time.
Yeah.
But the message was very familiar to what we've heard through our surveys and from residents that after-school programs, before-school programs, summer programs, um, daycare, adult learning programs, you know, all these enrichment activities are, would be welcomed in Belcher Town. There's only so much that our rec department can do. And people would like to pursue it further, I think, you know, potentially as a future agenda item. We could talk about forming an exploratory committee to see what we could, you know, glean from this. But we are actively engaged with, with this effort. Um, it's just, there's not enough time in the day, so.
Um, attended the fair on, on the parade on September twentieth. Um, October first, I had a full day. Um, attended the branding meeting, um, which resulted in them coming before us tonight. Met with, um, Chief Pacunas and Sergeant Mann regarding, um, Mountain View Drive and the decision that was made that it is not a criminal matter and they closed that case. Um, attended EDIC and I, um, attended the ag commission, um, meeting. Steve, one thing I just want to ask, um, when we have our legislative visit, I, I do want to bring up the topic of Lamson Brook Farm and what's going on, that, the impasse between legislature and DCAM. It was something that came up in the ag commission meeting and I said that I would bring it, um, to our legislative visit, just to understand what's going on there. So I'm just letting you know. Um, and that's it.
Yeah, this is the part where it's like, what did I do that nobody else did? Uh, not too much. So I'll just say the same things. Belcher Town Fair was fantastic. I, uh, we spent the whole weekend there. It was great. And thank you, John, for showing me a heart that I'd never seen. Uh, got to really go walk around the, the stockyard area and meet people.
I'm gonna talk about the hay bale toss. I'll leave that for you.
I know. And then Sebastian has the hay bale toss. He won. It was so fun. So it was great. So thank you for that. I also volunteered with, um, the exhibition hall and that was so great too, just talking to people who've been doing this for years and years and really understanding some more of the history. Um, and then I attended meetings virtually the last few weeks. This is kind of my high season at work. So I attended the school committee, uh, session virtually on the twenty-third. And, um, then, uh, I did something else, which I can't read my own handwriting, but it was definitely very important. And then the really cool thing I did this past weekend was, which I think is gonna be a Belcher Town tradition, was Lake Wallace Fest, which I'll let Jen talk about, because she was involved in that.
I didn't want to take her thunder.
Nobody wants to talk about the Lake Wallace.
We wanted to save your thunder. It was so much fun.
Wallace Fest was amazing. The group of, it came out of like, two people wanted to make a trail race. And it mushroomed out of there, the rec department, and all of the volunteers like knocked it out of the park. It was amazing. There was food, there was racing. I think between the race, the one, the five K, the one K and the roll and stroll, there were ninety participants that registered. The entire, the, so between the trail itself and the new Pocket Park and all of that whole area, the skate park area, that whole area was activated. And that is, that was the whole point of putting all of those pieces and infrastructure in place, was to activate these public places for people to enjoy. I had, um, a gentleman come up to me and he was like, we came to use the skate park. Is it open? Can we use it? And we were like, yes, absolutely, of course. And he's like, we use the skate park all the time. We didn't realize there was a trail here. So like, this is the type of like word of mouth, like kind of events that will get recognition to the asset that we have invested over a million dollars into this trail. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a gem. We also unveiled, um, there's some sculpture benches on the trail now that the BCC commissioned and, um, also a new sculpture that, um, Mr. Longley, our resident sculpturist, uh, has almost completed. He was really working hard to get it done for the event. Um, we had it mostly done. We had it mostly done. He took it back to finish it, but it's like, it's a heron. It's really cool. I'm not sure where they're gonna place it.
Did he use pieces of the tower on it?
Not yet, so he's reserving those. So there's like a whole other concept that has been pitched that nobody's secured funding for, and I think he's reserving the Tagil Tower pieces for that. I'm not really sure. But I was like, Donnie, like, are you gonna do all the sculptures? Like, we'll find the funding and we'll figure it out, and... But it was an amazing day. It was really great. You know, the weather was perfect, and it was just really well-attended, and there were groups of people that rotated in and out, so it was a great first event. I look forward to next year. They made a good chunk of money for maintenance, I think.
Are we gonna find out?
We don't have the final numbers, but it was at least five grand, they think.
Oh, yeah, I imagine.
Yeah.
You mean, it's important to note there was volunteers, and they were there at like, what, five fifteen, with headlamps setting out signs?
Oh, no, yeah.
So they were up there very early, so that's part of what the town's about.
Yeah, so, other highlights, we are having a meeting with the chancellor from UMass next week. We're working diligently on that agenda and making sure that we...
Who's attending that meeting?
It's a small group of folks, so Steve and myself and Lisa Lassard, and Lisa Stahl, who is the facilitator of the conversation.
How does that meeting, like, how do you guys decide who goes to what meeting?
This is, I'm just gonna preface and say, this is like really like a, he's coming to find out what Belcher Town's all about, so we don't wanna overwhelm him with like a huge group of people.
Okay, but how do you decide who gets invited to something like that?
I don't have an answer for that. You know, like, I think we're just trying to keep it small. Lisa facilitated it. She initiated the conversation. Not Lisa Lassard, Lisa Stahl. We've been working with the Amherst Chamber, and they were the ones who initiated and facilitated conversations with the UMass Community Relations. We've been meeting with Community Relations. Realistically, it's, it's an economic development project, but it's sort of not. It's also community engagement. They're, they announced at the Legislative Chamber event that we've attended, Whitney and I were there, and Lisa Stahl and Doug Albertson, about this Economic Development Task Force that UMass is putting together, so they're gonna come to our community outside of this conversation. So there'll be more conversations. This isn't like a one, this is hopefully the beginning of like more of a strategic conversation.
And I get that. I just, I've just had this ongoing thought in my head that I just feel like there's a lot of meetings that take place where not everybody on the board knows what's going on, and I feel like for certain meetings, especially something as important as this, we really should all be coming together to say, okay, who are the best people? Shouldn't be everybody, I agree.
Right, right.
But who are the best people to put forward? And I'm not, that, that meeting is not me. Don't worry, I'm not saying, Jen, why didn't I get invited? I'm not.
That's totally fine.
But I just want us all to feel like we all know what's going on. It goes right back to this housing trust thing that we were talking about earlier, and I want us to put forward our best people
Yep.
to present Belcher Town going forward, if we can do that.
A hundred percent. I totally agree, and that's what, we had, we had at least one pre-planning meeting. We have another one scheduled to discuss exactly what you're talking about. Who are the best people? We're gonna have, who is the best person to talk about this topic and this topic and this topic? But, you know, definitely the town planner for economic development, our town manager, the person that initiated the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, it was the chair of the select board. You know, that's usually an obvious choice. Jen's been involved in economic development around, but I don't know if there was any conscious...
Yeah, I guess I just don't want assumptions to be made going forward. I want us to formally discuss this stuff and be more strategic about who we, especially with economic development. I mean, that's our number-one goal and objective this year, right, that we've set as our, you know, the most important thing, and I just want us to be more thoughtful with how we gather people.
Yep.
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 So, that's upcoming. I don't have to rehash. I mean, it was Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, so happy New Year to all of our two residents. And one last plug, I do have an exhibit at the library.
Of what?
Because, did you know Jen's an artist? I didn't know. It's not that important anyway.
Then why'd you tell everybody?
I know.
Well, what is it? I wanna know.
You can go to the library and...
You gotta go over there and get your card and get...
I have a card.
Okay, uh...
Run the wall.
We have lots of things for future items for discussion. Are there any questions from the press? Okay. Are we doing this executive session?
Yeah, I need ten minutes. I can be quick.
I move, we enter into executive session, not to return to open session. NGL, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, subsection six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, Cold Spring School, and subsection seven, to comply with the Act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, approval of executive session minutes.
Okay, do your second.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are all...